Rather than just go, "I don't want to pay those taxes." So, that having been said, Mr. Jesse, would you be kind enough to lead the group in prayer?
Yes, I will.
And Matt, if we pledge allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just like to thank you for just waking us up this morning and giving us another lovely day, dear Lord. And dear Lord, let's pray for this nation and the Commonwealth of Virginia, who's going through a lot of trials and tribulation, but just keep the counties and the state and governments involved, you know, and let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business today. Amen.
Would also listen to our nation rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. I would just say that under constitutional officers, treasurer report only, you do have a handout for interest received for December. And then moving on down, I believe Mr. Koontz would like to talk about broadband budget supplement as item F under regular agenda items. With those changes, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So ordered. Thank you. At this point, we'd like to open the floor to public comments. We ask your indulgence, please. It's three minutes per citizen, and if you're representing four or more, you can have 12 minutes, and this is just as a courtesy to the rest of the citizens, and hopefully you can get your point across to us in the allotted time. So, first citizen, please.
I passed out some photos of Cross Rip Road. It's in Deltaville. I've been living there three years. This is the worst I've seen, the road. And I'm requesting some assistance on trying to get the hardtop from Cross Rip on the first page all the way down to Sun Sand Beach Road. I just need a little guidance on which way I need to go. Getting with VDOT to maybe take the road over.
Your name, sir?
Bruce Lowe, 7 Sun Sand Beach Road.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to say that.
And I forgot to ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Reminded. We usually don't have dialogue in this. We do have representatives of VDOT here. Are these roads state roads?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's where we need to go, and if Joyce or Ron would like to address it, they can, or otherwise, that's where you need to go.
Okay. Is I here today and I can get some cards and information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen, please.
Mister Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Harold Muller. I live in Kilmer's Point, Middlesex County. I'd like to address part of what I saw in your briefing package today on the sewerage for the county. There were two things that struck my attention right away. One was the reconfiguration of what we're going to be doing with the sewerage, going from a surface distribution to a more centralized and pumping station arrangement. As I went through it, I started to think back over the years that I've lived in Kilmer's Our little community has 186 homes in it, which is either equal to or larger than the town of Urbana. We, a lot of our homes are on the water. We've talked about sewerage many, many times for that community. In fact, I've had Matt over to some of our homeowners association meetings along with Dr. Pine. I knew a long time ago we weren't as part of the upcoming agenda for the sewerage from Hampton Roads. But then I got thinking about it, and it seems like everything circles around us getting sewerage. The complex out at the center at Cook's Corner, we don't have sewerage there. It doesn't look like that. That's going to go anyplace because we won't be able to get grants. With 186 people that we have, if we put a pipe underneath Robinson Creek, went up Wardmont Road, we could go to the distribution center that's located in Urbana. Dr. Pine, at the time, said that was a very reasonable approach. We would be a cash, not a cash cow, but a cash providing entity for Hampton Roads because the infrastructure is basically there, 100% of it. There are some obstacles, a few of them that could be overcome very easily with just a little dialogue with the community. But why wouldn't we want to get a cash providing entity to those projects from the get-go? Rather than come up and put it in Saluda where we're going to have a couple of businesses, some government entities, and that's about it to start with? You know, we're betting on the come. Build it, and they will come. I've been here 31 years. Very few have come yet. So why not, why not look after the needs of the people within the community? We have needs over there. Our septic systems are failing. $25,000 to update a septic system. This is what it's about, is taking care of the residents that live here too, not just what's going to come. Thank you all very much, and I hope you have a blessed New Year.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
How you doing? My name is Jeff Perkins, Perkins Construction, business license number 34. I just got my tax bill, and I know you've made the rounds saying that we shouldn't worry about it.
You're a resident, sir?
Yeah, yeah, totally. Anytime a tax or a cost goes up 120%, it's alarming. And I would like to make these three points. They're not all about the tax, but on 6/15, Mr. Walker presented to the board that this tax would bring the rates to the middle of the regional costs. Wasn't sure what regional means. I know we're in the Mid-Atlantic region. Mr. Mansfield commented that this change would be the median of all the surrounding counties. It's not. Our surrounding counties, Matthews, five cents, Gloucester, 10 cents, Lancaster, nothing, Essex, nothing, Richmond, nothing, King and Queen, 16, the towns of Tappahannock, 15, towns of Killmoreck, 1 cent. If you take out the ones that don't have a tax and average it out, it comes to nine cents. Right now, I'm at 12 cents. It's just a shock. It seems to be too much for people all at once. So my second point is that you're asking for the monies on March 30th, right when the state and the federal government is asking for it as well. So that might cause a hardship for some. If there was a way to split it like the property tax, or maybe have the licenses renew in June when you're not also paying your state and federal, it might be an idea. Now, the third thing, which really is not about the tax, it's about the 40 pages of the ordinance, which I read in full, and I just want to read a couple lines out of it. Every dealer shall keep at his place of business an accurate and legible record. Each person engaged in the business of contracting shall include his gross receipts located in his principal office. Any licensed tag growers, this is for farmers, sign, any licensed tag or grower sign issued under this section shall be affixed, displayed by the owner, on the left hand of his cart, wagon, dray, automobile, pushcart, or other vehicle. If you're a taxi driver, you must have reasonable proof of his employment status. The zoning administrator or his designee, the chief of police or his designee. The commissioner of revenue, Ms. Priscilla Davenport, it shall be the duty of the commissioner of revenue to require all parties prosecuting business, I'm going to jump a bit, and should there be any license tax not paid, it should be his duty to report it to the Commonwealth Attorney. I looked through it, I saw the word "her" written three times. And one of them was, "Keep covered with fully opaque clothing of a John Ginnis regions and any portion therefore of his or her body while in the presence of a patron." That was from a susus. I'll give him credit on page 31. It did say, "The commissioner of revenue shall require that market fruits and vegetables meat will be on file with him," and there is a "her" written there. So someone caught it. What I'm getting at, I think you know where I'm going. In 2019, it would be nice if we could write ordinances that are just a little bit less sexist, and that, there's words like "their" designee instead of "his," and that's a way for me to forget about having to triple my taxes, so that's my gripe. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. Robert Jackson, Urbana. Southside Sentinel, January 31st, 2019. Article reads, and I quote, "Renovation of Middlesex High School East Wing considered," end quote. It seems really odd and questionable and suspicious to me that only two firms, Bay Design and The Thrusts Group submitted RFPs, and they have since joined together. The question should be asked, how many other firms and groups submitted RFPs since no others were mentioned in the article? I understand trying to support local businesses, but on the other hand, spending taxpayers' money should be a major consideration also. Just because they are local does not necessarily mean they would be cheaper. Also, just because the county administrator and the school superintendent believe they are capable of doing the work does not mean that there are not more capable firms and groups out there and cheaper. This board should step back and take a serious look at its spending. It's been said before, and I will say it again, this county have a serious, serious spending problem, and the taxpayers are paying the total price. I urge you board members not to rush and be pressured into making any decision that you might regret later down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Linda?
The other half of the Muller family, Linda Muller from Urbana. I read through the packet last night and started reading about all the different projects and the different documents that were there associated with these projects. And I started thinking back, you know, I come to a lot of board meetings, and I'm aware of a lot of the projects, and that they're all in different phases. Some are just planning, some are serious, some are actually being implemented. But I started thinking this last night, I was going through the packet. It seems like that a lot of these projects, even though they're in various stages, are starting to bump up against the Cook's Corner revitalization project. And it seems like, from having these separate documents to look at, that the Cook's Corner revitalization might be causing us to speed up some of the projects that were in planning stages or working stages, and therefore will cause the expenses for those projects to hit the budget sooner. My concern is, that's what it seems like to me, it's somebody who's pretty engaged, who comes to meetings, who reads the packet. I'm hoping that you, as a board member, have some kind of tracking tool that lays it out in front of you, so you have a good view, an overall view of what's happening when, and oh my gosh, if this happens next, this expense comes sooner than we expected, what can we push back? I'm asking if you do have that tool, is there some way you can share some of that information with the public so that we can be more aware of how all these projects are working together now, and when the expenses may actually come to fruition? Thanks.
Thanks, love. Next citizen, please. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, move on to constitutional officers. Under treasurer, you've got the report only with the handout that was added to your packet. And item B, Sheriff Bushy has a request.
Good afternoon. I come to you today to notify you, number one, Captain Paige Bishop, who started his career with Middlesex after retiring from Henrico as a battalion chief. He was our chief bailiff for 19 years over in our courthouse. And not only was he doing that, he actually would have helped the county and the sheriff's office find used equipment, which he did, and he had some good resources, and we saved a lot of money in the past years by buying used equipment instead of new equipment. Some of that has dried up, and he's had a great career here. He's worked with our radio communications on how we came up, moved forward with that, and he's going to be greatly missed. He's retired, he's in Florida right now. He's coming back this next week, but now that he's gone and retired, he did put a request in, which is under state law, that he could purchase his weapon with your approval for $1. So I asked the board if they would vote and approve that for him.
So moved. Motion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So ordered. Sheriff, I mentioned to you before the meeting, I would like for us to make a little bit more of a public display of appreciation for your officers when they retire after so many years of service and qualify for this revolver purchase. And just, if you can keep that in mind, if Paige will ever come back from Florida on a first Tuesday, we can do it for him, or just something to bear in mind as we move forward, because I want to show these people appreciation for the service that you give them in our county.
Okay. Yeah, and just, as long as we get the literature right, because the gentleman said something about his or her designee under the sheriff, and it's also wrong in that ordinance, they called me a department, so I can't enforce it anyhow, so we just got to make sure we designate and write our ordinances correctly.
Okay.
All right. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agency and staff reports. We've got Joyce McGowan down here, but I see Ron is here also, so we'll take either
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm sorry I missed last month. We had a conflict. Wednesdays are the meeting days. I'm usually in Fredericksburg, so my apologies for that. I think you should have a note in your package, I think, pages 39 and 40, it looks like, of what we've done over the past month. Just a reminder for construction projects that the secondary six-year plan will be coming up again for consideration. Hopefully sometime the end of this month, first part of March, I will be sending out your new revenue projections and your budget for the FY '20 fiscal year, as well as some options for you to consider for your plan. Canoe House is the last unpaved road in the county, and we will be doing that this year, so you don't have to worry about prioritizing unpaved roads. But with the funding that you do have, you'll have to think about what type of other small spot improvements or projects you'd like on the secondary six-year plan. So we'll put together some ideas for you to have for that, so we can get that moving. Did have a correction, the bridge project, the 625 bridge replacement over Bear's Pond has been moved to November of 2019. With all of the storm damage from Tropical Storm Michael, our bridge crew's been really busy putting together pipes and culverts and things like that on the state system. We had a, the Montgomery Cove Road, Route 650, there's a no outlet sign that was requested and should be going up, and we're still reviewing the speed stutter requests for Whiting Creek Road and Route 3, for those curve warning signs. We haven't gotten resolution for those yet. If you were out in the mornings, probably a couple of weeks ago, out at the light, there was an issue with the electronics in the signal box. That's the simplest way to explain it, so that the cycle that when you were coming from Urbana or 227 into Saluda, the light wasn't changing, it was skipping the cycle, and it was backing the traffic up. We've resolved that issue, hopefully, and we're keeping an eye on it, so hopefully that won't happen again. We are, and a project that's ongoing is replacing the light poles at the parking ride. Those light poles have reached the end of their useful service, and we appreciate them, but it's time to move on. So we have two new poles set, and hopefully we'll have all that straightened in the next 30 days, so. And moving forward, we'd like to maybe do some more improvements to fix up the parking ride and maybe partner with you for a project, to see what we can do out there. But other than that, I don't have any other updates of our transportation program here. I can add about Cross Rip Road, if you'd like me to. I don't, this is appropriate.
Yes, I think that'd be fine.
Route 1113, and I think the other section back there, there are like quarter-mile-long roads there, they're surface-treated. Those roads are on our surface treatment schedule for this year, so if there's any prep work that needs to be done on those, like pulling the shoulders, patching potholes, they'll be taken care of before they come in and resurface. So that's already on our schedule.
Great.
Taken care of. That was easy. Unless there's something I missed?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything for me?
If you wouldn't mind making sure you exchange your business card with Mr. Lowe, so that he has access directly to you, and that'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you, and nice to have you back.
All right. Any other questions for me? What? Well, thank you.
Thank you. School Matters, Dr. Peter Graves.
Good afternoon, everyone. As always, I've got some information to share with you about upcoming events, and a couple of appropriation requests to process. Before I do, I just want to take a moment and thank this board, and those of you that wrote letters of support regarding, you know that the, there's an amendment that's proposed currently in the state budget that would increase funding to divisions through the at-risk add-on. And that specifically is a way that the state budget can recognize that those of us, small or large, who serve large populations of impoverished students and students who are at risk, need more funding to do that than others. It's an important amendment, and it's one that's very, very dear to us, and so I just want to express my thanks, because many of you took time to write letters of support, and that's very humbling that you did that, so thank you. We don't know what's going to happen with that, but I'll certainly keep you updated. So there are two appropriation requests, three, pardon me, to process. Would you like me to take them in a specific order?
Four.
Four? Okay.
Karen added one on Friday.
You might need to let me see that. So two of these are insurance reimbursements. They're pretty straightforward. One related to the sign in front of Sinclair Walker, there was a deductible associated with that. And then another covering property damage to the HVAC equipment that happened during a power surge. So those two are insurance recoveries?
Dr. Pete?
Yes.
Question on the, that sign was hit by a vehicle, is that correct?
Yes.
So the deductible would have fallen on the vehicle, not on us. Is that correct?
That's right. This is processing that deductible.
Processing back.
Yes.
I got you.
I should have clarified that.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, I was just.
And then in addition, there is, okay, Title III Part A. This is, we go through this every time. The federal government, we're aligning our federal allocation to the actual amount from the one that we were told to budget when we did this application back in July. So that's this one that's facing you now. It's truing up the budget, if you will. This is the insurance processing for the tennis court that was damaged during the storm. These are rebates and refunds that come to us through when teachers do their licensure or certifications. It's a reimbursement that comes to us, and we put it in this fund, rebates and refunds. So this is appropriating those funds that we've collected, fingerprinting, background checks, screenings, certifications, licensures. And this is the one for the HVAC equipment?
I approve that we approve budget supplement requests FY 2019, 29, 30, 31, and 32.
Proper moves, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. So ordered.
Thank you. And then really quickly, I'm going to distribute this. One is a list of, February is named Career and Technical Education Month, and so there's a list of activities that are happening in our high school, and I just want you to be aware of them. And if you'd like to avail yourself of the opportunity to drop by and visit, I'd love for you to do that. I know Ms. Swineheart did that recently at the high school specifically to look at what was happening with CTE independently of me, and you are welcome to do that anytime. I encourage it. And I think she had a very positive experience there. Also, with the upcoming events, I won't read these to you. I do want to invite you during the month of March, we do, we have an initiative called One Book, One School, One Book. And so we'll be reading a book together, everybody in the community, and I'd love for you to be a part of that. When you go into the school, the kids are ready to be asked questions, and it's just a way that we celebrate literacy together. And finally, on the back of the page, I've given you some information regarding our solar array. And this is the solar array, I'm sorry, the back of, I'm talking quickly, the back of the upcoming events page. So this gives you, to date, through January, the panels were turned on in August, August 19th specifically. You can see, they generate more during the spring and summer and early fall months than they do in the winters. Turned on in August. You can see exactly how much energy they've produced for the schools. That's the second bullet. You can see what we're paying for each one of those kilowatt-hours through our agreement. And you can see what we would be paying if we were doing this through the traditional route. And it's simple math, to just multiply each rate by how much power we've generated, and you can see that we've saved, to date, $14,694. Now, we estimate through our consumption, we know that by the end of a full year, so August to August, that we believe we will have saved about $43,000. And in the beginning of this, you'll remember this time last year, we reduced our budget request by $50,000 in anticipation of this savings. So we're about on track. It may be a little less than we anticipated, but we're very pleased with it. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. We do have a dashboard that we can pull this up anytime.
I thank you for that, because I had several questions.
Absolutely.
Citizens that said, "Well, where are these power savings figuring into the budget?" And it was in a reduced ask.
Yes.
It just takes it from $50,000 to an actual figure, and I think the citizens appreciate that.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Social Services, Ms. Rebecca Morgan. We're glad to have you today. You don't come see us often enough.
I can come more often. Be happy to. Wanted to give everybody an update on, I know that the federal shutdown is technically over, but we'll see what happens in about a week, and how that impacts the citizens of Middlesex County who receive SNAP benefits. So what happened in January was that we had to issue February benefits early, and so all February SNAP benefits got issued on January 17th. So this did a couple of things. One, it really frazzled our staff. They had to get all of their paperwork for February completed by January 15th, but they did. They got every single one completed. Two, it creates a lot of confusion for our clients, many of whom are older adults, many of whom have intellectual disabilities, and many of whom just take their EBT card and go to the grocery store and use it, and don't understand or think that, "Oh, they must have given me some extra this month." And so what's going to happen this month is many people are going to go to Food Lion, Deltaville Market, Urbana Market, and they're going to be out of money to buy food. We have talked to hands across Middlesex. They are aware of the situation, and they are prepared. They are aware of the situation and they are prepared. My fear is that if the federal government were to shut down again, we're going to go through this whole cycle where we're going to issue March benefits early in February. And it's just constantly going to cause problems for our clients. And I talked about this at our advisory board meeting and we thought it was important enough that I alert you all that we may have to do some creative help for our clients over the next few months. They're going to be behind in February, so then when they get their benefit in March, more than likely, they're going to spend that all and they're just going to get behind. SNAP, I understand that a lot of people think it's just for low-income people, but I want to let you all know that most folks who receive SNAP are working adults unless they have a disability, unless they have children in their home under the age of eighteen, they are required to work. So most of our folks who get SNAP have jobs. The jobs that they have just do not provide enough money for them to get meals every month. Also want to let you know that SNAP is a stimulus for air economy. Generates anywhere from a dollar fifty. The estimates are different depending on what research you look at, but I don't think many convenience stores and grocery stores would be in business if it were not for SNAP dollars. There is no local money involved in SNAP. It is a straight federal program. That is why the federal government shutting down has such a great impact upon this program. So I just want to give you a heads up and let you know that there are trickle effects and the ones, when political problems often happen, the ones most affected are those who don't have the resources to be able to get themselves through it. Second update I want to give you, our Medicaid expansion project. Virginia expanded Medicaid this year. The start date was January 1st. Middlesex County was estimated to have between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and eighty odd folks. We all said it's going to be five hundred. So far, we're at February 5th today and we're at four hundred and twenty-one people and it's February 5th. So as you may imagine, we are louder. We are going to be getting more folks signing up for Medicaid expansion, which is good. Healthcare is good. It's really important. But understand what bringing four hundred and twenty-one additional clients to our caseload does for our staff. They've done a great job. We're ahead. We have no pending applications right now that are over forty-five days and we're hanging in there. We're doing great. But I think it's important to bring these items to your attention and also to let you know that, hey, there's an additional service that's being offered to folks in Middlesex County. And I think it's really important, especially when it comes to healthcare. It's going to be savings in the long run. So those are my updates for today. On a lighter note, we are going to be starting a summer food program this summer. We've got some great partnerships going on and I will hold you in suspense until my presentation on Friday for more on that. Any questions?
Questions?
Rebecca, in terms of federal shutdown, does TANF have a similar impact? Does that?
TANF, which is Temporary Assistance for N needy Families, is a little different because it's fifty-fifty state, federal. And Virginia actually usually has a surplus in TANF. So as of January, Virginia was able to fund TANF fully through the end of this fiscal year. In many states, it would have the same impact, but because we use our TANF dollars very judiciously, we're able to keep it. And TANF is for very low-income, working families. But TANF is also important because any relative who takes in a grandchild or a niece or a nephew also relies on TANF dollars every month. And we're not talking about, we're talking about about a hundred and seventy bucks a month per child. We're not talking about large amounts of money here. But, good question, and thankfully, no.
So to the extent you felt a need to alert us about SNAP and the seven hundred and one users that you, clients that you have there, what are you telling us? What would you have us do if on the 15th we're shut down again indefinitely?
Well, it's not seven hundred, seven hundred and one is the number of cases. That actually translates to over two thousand citizens in the county who rely on SNAP. And I could be coming to ask for supplemental allocations to purchase food. I could just be reaching out to you for ideas on community dinners, sponsoring food drives, those kinds of efforts, partnering formally, more formally than we do now with Hands Across Middlesex or Healthy Harvest Food Bank. Those are the kinds of things that I would need help with.
Should we be anticipating a shutdown on the 15th and maybe starting to build out some contingency plans where you're more coming to us saying, here's what I think we should do, rather than looking to lay people that aren't experts in social services? Like, I'm not going to have any great ideas. They're going to be very kumbaya and sound cool, but they'll be inefficient and terrible.
I think in, at the office, we have come up with some strategies, some specific strategies to how would we address X need. And I think it's a little early to kind of pull the trigger on some of those, but I take your point that yes, we need to be prepared and not just for this crisis, but it's always a good idea to kind of have backup plans in place should these kinds of situations occur in future.
Would natural disasters?
Yes.
Have similar results? I mean, it does seem like an opportunity to some extent to be more prepared when you show up, you say, hey, we see something that's happening in real time. We're going to have a problem providing services that are critical. Here's what, here's what our plan tells us we're supposed to do at that point.
Right.
It seems like an opportunity there. And I can imagine you're still recovering from the shutdown and your entire staff has probably been overworked. And so when you throw them the idea, hey, let's create an emergency plan right now, it probably isn't going to go over very well, but something to think about for if ever there's a quiet month.
Any other questions? Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. Take care.
Next, from the Virginia Department of Health, Dr. Richard Williams, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. With me is our business manager in the Three Rivers South District, Crystal Reagan. Before I give you a quick overview of our activities in the district, I would like to address a question that arose during your last meeting about a, about our particular chart that appeared in our annual report. I do want to thank the board for raising those questions. That was an early version of our annual report. We have revised it, I think. You really helped us develop a little bit better way to communicate that data. But the chart itself is, it depicts savings per county by provision of family planning services. It's based on a, an algorithm that's based, that uses national norms populated by numbers of eligible people receiving family planning services per county. This was developed by researchers in 2014 and is widely used throughout the country. So that's where the numbers actually come from. Specific question had to do with number of pregnancies prevented, unintended pregnancies prevented, and a subset of that number of births prevented. The chart looked like those were two separate numbers. They really were not. Not every pregnancy results in a birth. So I did, by the way, call and explain this to Mr. Muller. I think he raised the question. I did satisfy, he was satisfied with our response, but I wanted to share it with you as well. The number of births prevented is a subset of the number of pregnancies prevented that would have resulted in birth. Some pregnancies are tubal ectopic, some pregnancies miscarrying for a wide variety of reasons. Some pregnancies are intentionally terminated by the pregnant folks. So the subset, the number of births is not a separate number. It's a subset of the number of pregnancies, unintended pregnancies that were prevented. Now, the second question was, do we in the Three Rivers Health District provide a morning-after pill? Okay? And the answer to that question is yes. As a provision of Title 10, which is the federal program that supports all of our family planning services, we are required to issue Plan B one-step pills to every person seeking family planning services who's not on a long-acting reversible contraceptive. Now, Plan B one-step is a large dose of a progestin compound. It's levonorgestrel. It's not an abortifactant, okay? Levonorgestrel prevents ovulation. It works exactly the same way as regular birth control pills do that you take every day. It simply is a very large dose of a progestin compound that prevents ovulation. So it doesn't cause abortion. The pills that cause abortion are progestin blockers. So they work exactly the opposite. They prevent the body from supporting the pregnancy. So we do, as a provision of the Title 10 grant, provide morning-after pill, but it's a contraceptive legally and pharmacologically. It is not an abortifactant. So does that pretty much address the questions that the board had concerning that issue?
So that medication, it's a heavy dose of what would normally be birth control is given the morning after?
Yes, sir. And, or up to five days after.
Right.
And it's effective about ninety percent of the time. And the intended mechanism of action is prevention of ovulation, of releasing the egg. So there's no chance of pregnancy occurring. Okay. I think you've probably had a chance to look at our annual report. You can see, I won't belabor that, you can see that we provide a wide array of services in both clinical areas, home visiting services, HIV treatment and prevention services, revive naloxone distribution and revive training, and environmental health services. We have been very active with our work in the district over the last year. We've produced a strategic plan, which I also believe you have. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you look through the strategic plan, you can, you can see our wide range of strategic partnerships that we have developed and are developing with elements within each jurisdiction we serve. Notably from that, we're particularly proud of a couple of things. Number one, we had environmental health services. We lost a lot of our licensed onsite people. And you can't just grow those people in a day. They, they're limited numbers. So we've created an environmental health associates program whereby we take entry-level people fresh out of training, out of school, and they do work in the community in our district that doesn't require licensure. In the meantime, we work them toward licensure. So we're growing, we're freeing up our licensed people to do licensed work and we have a pool of folks that we're growing our own environmental health specialists. So that's working out very well. We are benchmarking with a couple of neighboring health districts about maternity services. There's a dearth of maternity services available in the middle peninsula and northern neck. I think we can meet that need very well with our clinical capabilities. So we're working toward reinstitution of maternity services as well as baby care for vulnerable populations. We're doing a lot of work with emergency preparedness. If need be, our Middlesex office right here could serve as an emergency operations center for any county in our jurisdiction. We have not only full communication capability landline, but we also have ham radio capability there on a variety of frequencies. So we're very, very capable. So that is a high-speed, low-pass, it's going to be a long day for you all, so I'm not going to belabor anything more, over what we're doing in the district. Very active. I think we're improving things quite a bit and we're looking to expand our services. I'd like to turn it over to our business manager, Crystal Reagan, who will go quickly through our budget for you and then we'll have questions.
Good afternoon. So this year for the budget for the 20 season, we're just asking for level funding. We're not asking for additional funding. We feel like we can, with fiscal responsibility, still make all of our demands and span our programs with the funding that we currently have. The way the funding works is Middlesex and the state are sort of like a partnership. Whatever you give us, the state matches about sixty-one percent. And then, of course, we also have our revenue through our different services, environmental health, nursing services, immunization, those things from our services. So those all combine with the revenue. And then we, we are the headquarters for the district. So a lot of our fiscal staff, human resources, your director, we have about thirteen permanent staff members in this location. So obviously, our personnel cost is a big hit to the budget as well as our information technology. That includes all of our telephones, equipment, laptops, all the connections, internet connections. All of those are big costs because we do have about thirteen people in-house in this district. But we still feel like with that budget, we maintain low cost for everything else by leveraging different grants and things like that to provide other, you know, essential functions like pharmaceutical drugs, things like that. We can get money elsewhere. So with just the basics of just personnel, rent, utilities, a little bit of transportation cost to keep a couple of vehicles in the district for our staff to use to go throughout the county, and our information technology, we can make do with level funding this year. Any questions for myself or Dr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions because I appreciate this and your plan and the strategic plan and sharing a lot of really great information. So thank you. And it's, in looking over your strategic plan, I'm looking at the page that has opportunities, weaknesses, and threats.
Yes.
Kind of a summary page. Just a couple, in, one of your goals for opportunities is to enhance community partnering.
Yes.
And you noticed some businesses, hospitals, whatever. I was wondering if you had a relationship with the YMCA in our county or the other counties?
Yeah, it depends on the jurisdiction, but yes, we do. We actually share space with the YMCA in at least one area. With regard to specific targeted interventions or plans like we share with social services, for instance, or like we've developed with some of the free clinics that are actually, or even faith-based organizations that are actually providing care or training for opioid response, we haven't gotten to that level with the YMCA, but it's a great idea. And I probably should, we probably should include that in this plan.
Okay. And I was, well, I won't go in the weeds, but I was thinking more preventative or health rather than treatment.
Right, right. In other words, there are fitness.
Right.
Is big for the YMCA and that's a key component of, you know, diet and exercise, key component of, in preventive medicine, key component of health. So that's where we would target our interventions with the YMCA.
Well, I think that might be an opportunity in Middlesex.
Yeah, well, the Matthews County YMCA has actually reached out to us and had asked us to partnership. We do revive training until help arrives.
Yeah.
They have actually asked for that in their facility. So that's actually going to give us a chance to expand to other YMCA's throughout our counties. But Matthews County YMCA has actually directly reached out to our emergency planning division to actually request different services.
But that doesn't get to your point.
Right.
Of preventive services. And it's well-taken.
Right. Okay. All right. And under weaknesses, you mentioned communication. I'm not looking so much at staffing, but bandwidth challenges. What, what exactly are we talking about?
Those are the limitations that we all perennially face in a rural environment with regard to high-speed internet capabilities and teleconferencing capabilities. And it's a constant struggle, I think, for any, for all of us to conduct business in the virtual world when we are limited with regard to high-speed bandwidth capability. So that's what that's, it's IT.
So you would say that the bandwidth capabilities we have here in Middlesex are inhibiting you in reaching your optimal?
I'd say that slows us down.
Okay.
It ain't like being in Richmond or Washington. It slows us down.
Okay.
Slows down the pace of business.
Good to know.
Your PDH facilities, aren't they along the Puller Highway?
On the Puller, yes.
And that doesn't have fiber from it?
Well, we're, again, this applies to every jurisdiction we have. So we're better in Middlesex than they are in Northumberland, for instance. So...
I hiccupped a little bit because I'm the chair of the broadband authority.
Sure.
And we're targeting areas in Middlesex that don't have broadband and to find out that some of our agencies right on the Puller Highway don't have fiber, that changes everything for me. So I panicked for a moment.
This is more in the truly rural sections. And we have a number of places like that.
And ironically, from a funding perspective on broadband, that's what we're finding is they're saying, you don't really have the problem. Some of the surrounding counties have it a lot worse than you. So we don't have any funding for you. So hopefully, some of that federal funding will address some of those issues for you in other jurisdictions.
Yes.
Okay. So then in your weaknesses here in the strategic plan, that's a regional concern?
This whole plan is district-wide.
And would that be the same with the septic system failures too?
Those are more yes, because every jurisdiction we have is, are very heavily dependent on septic systems and a lot of those systems are failing. But that vulnerability is greater in low-lying areas. But that vulnerability is greater in low-lying areas where the water table is higher and that are threatened by sea level rise and coastal flooding and those sorts of things. But yeah, that is a major risk that we face in real time now and in the years and decades to come.
Okay. Because I understand under the planning district commission, there's resources out there, but that, okay. And then, what would help with your challenge of hiring and retaining staff?
I think we're addressing that. We have done in-band increases to try to, the big complaints are based on salary mainly. And we've managed to enhance our, the salaries that we give both to our environmental health people who we were losing and to our office staff people who we were having trouble retaining. And so we're addressing that. And the Virginia Department of Health supports that. That was agency-wide. And also, we focused in our district on some of our folks that needed more money. Crystal, you have any comments beyond what I just said? Okay. I think we're addressing that.
In restaffing, do you have any entry-level positions where you're hiring high-school-level graduates, or is the kind of position both in the office and in the environmental health world post-college exclusively?
High-school graduates would be eligible for our office service specialist jobs. Those are mainly the entry-level jobs that we have for them. There are a couple of other niche jobs we have that are mainly funded through grants, like resource mothers that don't require college education or advanced degrees. But our licensed folks, most of them are college graduates. And our environmental health associates, most of them are college graduates.
I would encourage you to reach out to our high school and the CTE department. I mean, we are developing and investing heavily in our public schools, and increasingly, as you're looking to replenish your workforce right up the road, we're building future employees, so take it forward.
Absolutely, and we'll take that to heart. We do, we are a bit of a, we're a step, we tend to be a stepping stone to greater opportunities. We've lost, we've hired and lost several of our office support personnel that are fresh outs just to that phenomenon in the past year. But we recognize that, and we will, that's a great idea. We'll note that and take it forward.
Have you considered, or are you already doing, any sort of tuition reimbursement as an incentive for somebody that might be going on to further education?
We would love to do that, but I don't believe...
The state offers something. Once you're actually employed with the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is a tuition reimbursement guidelines that we have. But no, we do offer that. I think some people have taken advantage of that to go take education. Those tend to be, again, our officer of specialists, that is a stepping stone, but the Commonwealth of Virginia actually offers that as an employee of the state.
I had a similar conversation with Chuck Walsh at the CSD, and they have a program like that as well. And I think what's happening, you know, I'm talking with the schools, I'm talking with PDH, I'm talking with any number of agencies, and everybody's having trouble replenishing. You're not the first one to say it's pretty much about salary. There's a lot of people that dance all around that, but it seems to me consistently, you're not able to pay with the budgets that you're given from various boards or supervisor. So you've gotta go and staff and find the best and the brightest for what you can pay, which might mean doing more training. I think the resources, as they were, the kids coming out of high school are starting to understand, "I may not make top dollar, but if they're gonna help me pay for my education, and this is a stepping stone, that's an opportunity." We need to get those smart kids that are thinking that way, thinking that nobody's gonna pay my free lunch, but if I work here as a stepping stone, maybe they'll help me with that school that I couldn't afford. I just think there's a match there, and the more we can talk to agencies that are talking to us about money, and we can say, "Hey, go do something with the resources that we've been pounding into these schools for 13 years," that seems like a logical place to be going.
Part of the, of our approach with the strategic plan and culture change in our district is to foster the idea of investing in the employees. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a family environment, a professional family. We support each other, and we take care of our employees. And seeing to their future, making sure they have conditions that are optimal for them to do their best job, considering their families, considering their futures, and looking out after those opportunities is being deeply ingrained in our culture now. So what you're saying is right up, right up the alley of what we intend to do and what we're doing. This plan, by the way, was benchmarked statewide to every health district. So we're starting to be a benchmark for others in Three Rivers, just FYI.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sorry about the miscue last month, but glad to have you here.
That was my fault.
Well, it didn't make any difference. I'm sorry that we miscued you.
That's no problem, but I tell you what, I'm happy for it, because, you know, you guys raised a great question. You look at it different eyes than I do at these slides, and that probably saved me some pain later on, so thank you so much.
Good, well, thank you all for coming.
And one last thing. We are Matt's staff, okay? We're your staff, we're your health staff. Any questions you have, any questions your constituents have about anything health-related, please don't hesitate to call. We'll be right there for you.
I don't know, Dr. Williams. You gave me a T-shirt with my own radio callsign. I think I'm more your staff sometime, right? When there's an outbreak, I guess I will be, right?
Well, yeah, we'll be holding hands.
Thanks, Doc.
Do they know what your callsign was?
They will.
Okay.
All righty, moving on to regular agenda items. Item A, the Middlesex Foundation. Bruce Deesamone, Bruce? Always a pleasure to hear from you.
Good afternoon. Preceding discussion on jobs makes me pleased to be following that up with hopefully a workforce housing project that will serve to attract and retain a skilled workforce. The draft resolution before you, it's needed for our Virginia Housing Development Authority permanent financing. And if I may, just give you a little bit of background, and I think it'll explain why I'm asking you to do that. VHDA was created in the 70s as the state housing finance agency. Housing, housing only. They sell bonds and then loan the proceeds for housing to be built. Typically, the income level's up to 120%. It was my understanding that local governments began asking VHDA to assist with some downtown revitalization projects. Probably the best example is you've got a vacant storefront, ground floor, retail, upper-story apartments. Well, because VHDA could only finance the housing, the owner would have had to have condo-ed the building so that VHDA would have financed the upper-story residential, but then the owner would have had to have found other financing for the ground for the retail, the non-housing. In addition to that, common sense and wisdom had VHDA and others around the country realizing that having a broader range of incomes in housing produces better housing, a better living environment. So putting all, both of those things together, about 15 years ago, VHDA went to the General Assembly and asked to amend the charter so that they could, in fact, finance what they called mixed-use, mixed-income housing. And as long now, and the General Assembly approved that, and so now VHDA, as long as it's predominantly housing project, could offer housing or financing, not only for the housing, but also for the non-housing or the retail component. But they also, in that same resolution and permission from the General Assembly, allow VHDA to have a more varied income stream of housing that they could finance. And in our case, we're looking at housing at 80% of area median income, 120% of area median income, and some housing market rate. That's what workforce housing in VHDA under this program is defined. So in order for us to use that financing, though, we need to have a resolution from you designating the area as a revitalization area, which brings it into conformity with the state code. And that's why I'm here today, asking you to adopt a resolution.
I move that we authorize the resolution designating the Cook's Corner Office complex area as a revitalization area.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
Emergency Services, David Layton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here today to request consideration to allow the county administrator to enter into a contractual agreement with Emergency Service Corporation for an interactive software program called I Am Responding. I Am Responding is a software program that enhances communication between the 911 Center and our first responders. This program improves response time and reduces radio communication, allowing our dispatchers to focus their attention on critical radio traffic. I Am Responding basically converts the first responder's mobile device or cellphone into an advanced pager. Currently, our pagers only provide voice communications and are limited to the geographical area of our radio system. I Am Responding is a web-based software program utilizing cellular data technology to improve, to provide supplemental dispatch notification to the first responder's mobile device directly from the 911 Center's computer-aided dispatch center. The incident type, location, additional comments are received via text message and/or email, and also includes an interactive map that indicates the quickest response route based on the first responder's current location. Upon receipt of the notification, the first responder acknowledges their response via the icon app, icon on the app. Once the acknowledgement has been received, this information is immediately seen on the monitor in the 911 Center, in the fire stations, and on all other members' mobile devices. This allows the officer to determine whether he or she has adequate staffing to manage the incident, or if additional assistance is needed from a neighboring department. Benefits of this software program, it dispatches messages directly to the mobile device, mapping of your incident with voice and visual navigation to the scene, live mapping of current locations of all of your members, hydrant and water supply location mapping, 40-plus marker icons. We can determine types of construction. If there's a road closure, this can be placed on that, on that device, on the program as well. Pre-plans of certain buildings, target hazards can be embedded into the program. It also provides each department a mass messaging system for interdepartment communications, as well as we have a county-wide access to all of our providers through the 911 Center as well. It offers the each-department web-based scheduling program and an interactive calendar, a training drill, and tracking and reporting system, an attendance tracking and reporting system, a class completion and certification expiration tracking and reporting system, and an apparatus status tracking. It's a pretty comprehensive package. All four of our fire departments and our rescue squads have been utilized in a 60-day free trial of I Am Responding for the past two months. The feedback has been nothing but positive. One department even stated the program has improved interdepartment communications and improved their participation by about 30%. This is a sole-source contract. It's a three-year contractual agreement with an annual payment of $34,444 per year for a total sum of $10,332. I'm not requesting any additional funds. This initiative can be supported through the Emergency Services Operational Budget. Contractual agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney and is of full support of the Emergency Services Committee. Therefore, I would respectfully request consideration to accept this proposal and allow the county administrator to execute the contractual agreement. I appreciate your consideration to this matter, and will be glad to answer any questions.
David, the money for this year can come out of your budget the way it stands?
The way it stands, yes, sir. And I can roll that money over as long as I've got that money again in next year's budget, we'll be fine.
As long as the budget doesn't go down, you'll be fine.
Yes, sir.
You have to make a three-year commitment?
I do. It's either three or five. We chose the three at this point in time.
And from the reviews I'm reading online, the only criticisms that I'm seeing are that it's a bit stale in updating and responding to people who use it and their complaints. I've only seen that review once. So I also note that the reviews go back some five, six years, so the product's been around. Maybe that was an older comment. The other review I saw is that it drains the battery on people's phones pretty quickly because of the GPS function.
If you keep the app open, but to be alerted, you don't have to have the app open.
Perfect, okay. So with a little bit of training, you could make sure your people aren't running into, "Oh, my phone died." How would, I mean, because I can download the app on my phone, but if you're on your $3,400 subscription, this is not something that others are privy to.
This is department-specific to their membership, and each department, the way we have it set up, each department manages their personnel.
Okay. How about intra-department? So if Urbana has a call, are the Delta Ville guys gonna be able to see it, vice versa?
Not until they're alerted at this point in time, but we are looking at other options. We're actually, we've got a phone conference next week, looking at integrating Matthews into the Middlesex program for mutual aid. Lancaster's looking at it right now. So we're also kind of tying it into a mutual aid aspect. I don't know where that's gonna go yet, but it sounds pretty promising.
They're looking at IAR as well?
Matthews already has it.
Nice, okay. What does this mean about the radio projects that we've been putting money into? I mean, are they still, are they obsolete because of this? Or how does that, how do I explain that to constituents?
This really has nothing to do with the radio.
Okay.
We still have voice pagers, and this doesn't take the place of voice pagers. This is just an enhancement. If the individuals don't want to carry the voice pagers anymore, they can utilize the I Am Responding app. The I Am Responding app is just so much better from the standpoint of the response, because when the tones go off, I can click the button, and I can pull up the map. It shows me where I am. It shows me where the incident is. It's got the address written out. So the problem with the voice pagers are dispatcher gives the address a couple times, but going down the road, did she say 3,400 or 3,200? So now you've got it recorded, and it's reduced a lot of unnecessary radio traffic of people calling back, asking to repeat the address and so forth.
So you've kicked the tires down at Matthews and sort of seen it, you know...
We've kicked, we've kicked the tires here for 60 days, and they have been nothing but responsive, 24/7, 365 office support. The first, there is an additional $250 setup fee and $50 a year telephone fee for the first year, but other than that, it's about $34, $44 a year.
Last question from me. Any concern about hands-free? I mean, if you're going to something where they're reading the screens and they're rushing onto a scene...
Hit a button and it'll talk to you as well.
Okay. But I mean, we need to train people with that, because in my company, there's a huge safety culture, and we talk about it, and we're all still on our phones while we're driving.
For where I'm working very well, I'm using it on my phone, cellphone, when we get calls in. A lot of times, you may be in certain areas that you don't get it, but you'll get it on your phone. And I really like, it's really working real well.
It, from my opinion, has been the best initiative that we've instituted since I've been here.
Yeah, it's great, it's a great, great program.
Do we need a motion?
I think we need a motion to allow Mr. Walker to enter into a three-year contract. Wait a second. What is the cost of this?
$34, $40 a year for three years.
How much?
$3,440 each year for a three-year contract, total of around $10,000.
And this, does this pretty well obsolete the radio system?
No, it has nothing to do with the radio system. This is just an alerting, this is just another alerting tool for the, to notify the first
Could you do everything that you are doing on the radio system through this?
No, sir. This is talking directly to the CADs through data. It's not voice communication back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we authorize the county administrator to approve the three-year contract for IAR software.
I'll second it. Motion duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you, David.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Walker, I believe you're on deck to talk about the Cook's Corner School renovation project and authorization to execute contract.
Yes, sir. And just a quick history and timeline on this project. Back in December, I believe it was, the Joint Budget and Finance Committee, made up of the school board and the board of supervisors, met and recognized the number of projects that were coming forward in the, in participation and continuation of the Cook's Corner Grant Project, but also the need that they had on evaluating potential renovation of the East Wing at the high school and how it was something they were gonna need engineering... East Wing at the high school and how it was something they were going to need engineering and architectural experience on. Being that we had that overlap, the committee decided it would be a good endeavor to kind of join forces, so to speak, put out an RFQ for consulting engineering and architectural services, pretty much on an as-needed basis, but with particular emphasis on those two major projects facing the counties and the schools at this time. Shortly before Christmas, we had a pre-submital conference that was attended by a number of firms. As stated in public comment tonight, there was one firm that chose to submit a proposal, and another firm who attended that pre-construction or pre-submital conference decided that they were better off as a team rather than separate. So they did submit one proposal as a team. The Budget and Finance Committee interviewed that submittal, which is Bay Design and the Thrasher Group, and found that they were more than capable of performing the work. What's in your packet is a master contract to, for your consideration. And I'm going to make one minor change. What we're asking for is the ability to negotiate and execute a contract pending school board review, which will be forthcoming next week, and a couple of minor changes that Dr. Pete and I need to see in the agreement. What you have in your packet tonight is a sample master agreement. It's pretty much verbatim the master agreement that Bay Design has with the county of Gloucester. So Gloucester can then come back in and negotiate and issue work orders for various projects. And the reason Dr. Pete and I decided to go this route was the projects that are facing the school board and the board at this point in time are kind of multifaceted. If you just look at the Cook's Corner Grant Project, we have the school bus garage, which is a component piece of that grant proposal, which is essentially find a site, build new. And then also within that grant request, we have renovations, extensive renovations to the Cook's Corner property itself, which is more renovation-type evaluations. And then still different on top of that is the renovation and evaluation of options at the East Wing at the high school. So the agreement you have in your packet, as of Friday, was the most current. We did receive one today, which had some updated information that I had asked for, and there's still a component piece that I think Dr. Pete needs to see. So all I'm asking for this evening is authorization to negotiate and execute this master agreement. Then, as we commission the team to move forward with one specific part of the project or the other, you'll get more detailed cost breakdowns and time estimates for those specific projects and not to exceed numbers. For instance, when Dr. Pete and I cut the engineering and architectural firm free to pursue the school bus garage component piece, we will have a work order for that component piece of the project and in front of the board for their review.
For the benefit of the public and the citizenry, you had concern earlier. I think it's important to make sure everybody understands, we had control over how many RFPs we sent out, and we sent out a bunch. We had no control over who responds. We have interviewed and liked the respondent, and the other component is a large amount of this work is time and materials. It just kind of goes against the thought of a bid process anyway, unless you're just dealing with the hourly rate and how many hours you anticipate.
Well, to be sure, as we stated at the Budget and Finance Committee, we would have preferred to have multiple submittals and multiple interviews that day, but we cannot control who submits. We did have a chance of, recently at Legislative Day, and of course, some of the bigger engineering firms were down there. Timmins did not submit because they were thinking they wanted something a little bit more robust with water and sewer in it. Having said that, if the multipurpose path project moves forward, Timmins has expressed an interest in bidding that. But we indeed cannot control who submits for the project, and...
Well, let me amend that a little bit because you just did say how we can control that. If we expand the scope or, you know, contract the scope, it may be a different market segment that responds, but for what we wanted, the market that responded was it.
Yeah. And one of the reasons, I think, Thrasher decided to go in with Bowman, or excuse me, not Bowman, but Bay Design, was the fact that they are a local firm. So it's not entirely bi-local, but it was a strength for them, being local and knowing the community and knowing pretty much the project a little bit in greater detail than some of these larger firms that aren't as familiar with the project. So what?
Did you say that, when you sent the RFP?
Yes.
You sent it to two companies, and they got together and decided that they could do it better jointly?
No, sir. We actually submitted RFQ on the state website that goes out to thousands of companies, is my understanding, or at least hundreds. And of that, one submitted. Well, two firms attended the pre-submital conference to find out more about the project, and they decided to go in together and submit as a team. They thought they were stronger as a team than separate.
But there were like five companies that came to the pre-bid.
Yeah, we had one architectural firm that came to the pre-bid, but they didn't have the engineering component, so they didn't submit.
Well, I'm a little concerned when two companies bidding against each other get together and decide that they can do it better jointly.
I think it was more of a decision that they can complement each other's skillset jointly. They didn't know they would be the only firm bidding. But if it's the board's desire to, we put out another RFQ, rebid this, we can do that. It just, we'll have to see what we get.
Well, and there's a cost to doing that, too. I mean, the market has spoken. I mean, like you said, the database that we submit to, if you're an engineering and architecture firm interested in working with government, you're monitoring that site, and when something pops up, you say, "Yeah, I'm not chasing that," or you say, "Yes, that's right in the middle of my bullseye. I want to be down there for that meeting." We had five show, two decided to bid. I mean, we can do it again and again and again, but we're going to the same place. We're not going to find new engineers and new architects with different interests unless we change our scope, which was the point I was trying to make earlier. And we can't really expand it. We've already glommed in numerous different projects, in part to capitalize on the economies of scale. We don't have much bigger. It's a small project, and the big firms aren't interested.
Well, we tried to broaden the scope as much as practicable by having it as an as-needed basis, with those two projects pointed out as examples in particular of what we were working on for the time being.
I would argue Thrasher might not have been interested but for Bay Design.
I think you may be right, based on some of the information we gleaned in interviews. But it was the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee, and the schools participated heavily in that, to move forward with the contract negotiations and execution with the contract, Bay Design and the Thrasher Group.
If you look at the qualifications of these firms together, you know, they've got a project history of these kinds of projects. So we're fishing in the right pond. It's just unfortunate we didn't have 17 vying for this business. We all would have preferred that.
So Matthew, you're looking for a motion to motion?
We need to actually add the superintendent's signature on this and have it go before the school board as well, because they're entering into this with us as a co-partner. And that's one change that I need to see to the contract. So if you will authorize us to negotiate the contract, and negotiate and execute a contract pending school board review and approval, that's probably what I need from the board tonight.
So moved.
I have a question. Do you want a second?
That's the way I like to do it. Do we have a second for the purposes of discussion?
I'll second the purposes of discussion. Okay. So my question is, when you say negotiate, Chip said this is basically time and material. What are you negotiating?
One of the things that we had asked the principal partner or principal team leader to provide or break down costs of all of the subcontractors that are part of their teams.
Okay.
That is not in the last version of the contract that I've seen here today.
So when...
And we also need to make a couple of amendments to the contract, adding Dr. Pete Gretz's signature to the contract.
So what are the unknowns here? Do we have, what's this contract worth to the company or to us?
Well, I'm not too sure I understand the question.
Well, we have this work that we expect to be accomplished. How much is it going to cost?
And one of the reasons we decided to go the master contract route is because until they really get into and scope the individual projects out, like the school bus garage being a new construction, it's really going to be hard for them to pin down a cost for that particular project. And as they do, we will put that back up in front of the board.
But we're contracting with them just to figure out what the cost of the project would be, not to do the project.
To work with them and develop the scope and the cost of the project.
This is very preliminary.
Yes, ma'am. It's a master agreement that allows us to go to them and get their cost for engineering that particular component of the project.
I see. So this, okay, okay. So we don't, we don't know how much?
We'll know later, when we get into the component pieces.
Okay, so then, is the board involved later when you get that?
It's my intention to make the board very much involved in every component piece.
Okay, so what we're authorizing today is to just take the next step?
A master agreement.
Okay, got it.
But you're not authorizing, or we're not authorizing, a given amount today?
No, sir. As we negotiate the work orders for each component piece, we'll be back in front of the board for those work orders.
Well, is this a time and material contract?
Pretty much.
Well, what are their rates?
That's one of the things I've asked for more information on. The last copy we got today has the rate sheet on it.
Just to add my discussion, I share with Mr. Mansfield a concern over just having a sole source, but also agree with Mr. Coons. We threw the fishing line out in the pond, and we knew there were several hundred fish out there, and there was only one fish that bit on it. And we can redo it, but I don't think we'd be, we're fishing in the same pond. I don't believe, I don't believe we'd be getting anyplace. So for that reason, and not to rush anything, I would favor going ahead and proceeding as outlined. So we have a motion. We've had some discussion. Is there any further discussion?
My question is now, we're talking about the bus garage, too, and what other components?
Well, you've got...
Just the bus garage?
You've got the bus garage.
And I understand the revaluation of the complex, all of that. What are we talking about on the school side?
Primarily renovation of the East Wing and I guess the school bus garage component, too. They want to evaluate the cost of potential renovation of the East Wing of the high school.
And I think also the vulnerable warehousing.
Yeah, and then there's that component, too, the Sid Thrith warehouse project that may be a couple of the school bus garage.
I'll just make sure so everyone knows exactly what's going on with this project on there, because sometimes within the segment, too, part of it was, too.
Absolutely. So what I'm asking for, just to be clear, is the authorization to negotiate and execute this contract, and I can give you the final negotiated contract based on the negotiated amounts after the school board has a chance to look at them.
And each component will come to us separately. This is not a blanket.
Yes, sir.
This is not a blanket. Each component is coming individually. Yeah. Any further discussion?
Just a question for Matt. Exhibit A doesn't show the rates. Is that intentionally redacted?
That's one of the things that has been added to the most recent version. And I've asked for more specificity on the rates and fees of the subcontractors.
Any further discussion?
Is there any chance that we could put this off until you get all the facts and we know what the costs are going to be? It just seems to me that we're signing a blank check, to be perfectly candid.
If the board wishes, you could table this until March 5th, and that will give the school board a chance to sign off on it prior to...
And you could then get some pricing on it?
Well, we have the pricing, but yes, sir. It could be tabled till March 5th, if needs be.
What's the cost of doing that?
We just get started on a couple of projects a little later.
All right, parliamentary procedure. Do we go ahead and vote on this, or do we give the motioner a chance to withdraw his motion and move that you table it until next month?
I don't care to withdraw my motion. I do want to add, that's not the only cost. I mean, we ask staff to do certain things. We step through them, and, you know, to get to this point and then say, "Well, let's wait another month," it adds cost to these projects. It adds fatigue, and we're a busy group. So, you know, if we want to do something, let's do it. If we don't, then why are we down this path?
Well, we'll have more specificity, more information, and the school board will have had a chance to sign off on it by then.
I'll feel more comfortable, a little more facts. I think it'd be a valid decision on taxpayers' money that we're doing this, and you got to look at it.
And to be clear, we're comfortable to table on it for that time being.
It's not going to hurt anything. If we just wait one more month, get a little more facts on everything.
Just make sure it's in the record if we're going to table it, why we're tabling it, so that next month when we bring it up and everybody's looking at each other like, "Where's this from?" "No, this is from last month, and we were this close, and then we decided we'd table it, and we got this much more information, and now we're voting on it." Let's just make sure when we get here in March, if we're going to table it, we know what we wanted. I mean, what more information do you want? You want the rates, right? That's the one thing. Do we even know what more we need? We're waiting for a month, or are we just waiting for a month?
Basically, I want to know, you know, as you're breaking it down, you know? Because in my understanding, how the whole project started, and then now the schools, and then we go into the high school, and I thought maybe everything more concentrated right at, you know, revaluation of Cook's Corner. You see, then you're adding on and adding on. And, you know, like I'm saying, I need more information on that and different things like that. And price, I mean, you know, what is this going to cost? And then let the citizen know that this is not a done deal, either, with all the things that are added on.
I guess what I'm saying, Wayne, is you're not going to get in cut and dry, this is an $80,000 project.
I realize that. I realize that. I'm not looking at that.
So if we table it a month from now, what we anticipate is that we would have the school board agreeing to the contract, and we would have the time, material rates, and subcontractor rates, but we still would have a separate action on each project?
Right. That would be my intention, as we develop each component piece and skip those out, have those in front of the board.
But as we have...
It seems like we have many opportunities to, you know, not go further if that was the intent, and at this point, we've got a design group ready to go.
I think out of consideration for some of the concern with Mr. Mansfield, I would almost recommend we table it until March.
And that's fine. I just...
I mean, I know there's general concern about one bit...
We have a capital improvement plan that has every one of these projects on there, many of which have been deferred over time. So we've kicked it down the road. Now it's here. We've looked at it and said, "Jeez, if we're going to bring in architectural and engineering power, why are we having them look at one project when we have three sitting here looking at us? Let's have them work more efficiently on all of these projects." And I apologize, I probably, as a Budget and Finance Committee member, haven't done an adequate job of reaching out to you guys and sort of telling you what's evolved over the last couple of months, and that I can do a better job.
I apologize for that, too.
Because Chip and I have been sitting in those meetings, and we're like, "Oh, we get it." You guys are like, "What's going on?" And that's on us. That's on us.
You're hitting it down the road right now.
But the point is, these are projects that we have been planning for, for many years. We've gone out and we've got grant funding for a lot of it, the school buses in particular. We've evolved a bit with the school board on location of the school bus facility because, you know, initially, we looked over there in Cook's Corner, and we said, "Well, jeez, this is starting to turn into a really attractive village community. Do we really want buses going in and out in front of the brewery and the wedding venue?" And then we said, "Well, maybe behind the elementary school." And then they said, "Well, that's like a $100,000 road to get back there." So then we evolved and sort of said, "Well, maybe we look at the high school campus area." The whole point is, what we need is not a bunch of supervisors and school board members trying to make design decisions. We need architects, architects, engineers, and designers. So we stepped through, we went through the RFP process, we put it in the biggest fish pool out there to try to find as many competitors as we can. We found ourselves in a marketplace that doesn't have 20 people responding. And I've heard, I've heard everybody loud and clear, there's some hesitation over there, and I do honestly own that I haven't briefed you guys from what we've done in the Budget and Finance Committee. And I hear you saying it's a month delay and it's not that big a deal, but I think culturally, we continue to sort of let people know that, "Yeah, we're going to step through this capital improvement plan, but it's only a plan." So my motion stands, and I leave it to the chair to take it over.
Well, I'd like to add just one more piece of discussion, because if we vote three to two to pass it tonight, which is a possibility...
Because if we, if we vote three to two to pass it tonight, which is a possibility, we alienate some support that we might have if we carried it over for a month. And my, my feeling as chair is I would rather have support consensus all the way around this table than 30 more days or 30 less days.
And I think I may have a compromise. I myself would be more comfortable with the school board signing off on it first because they are a co-partner. We do have an opportunity with them on February 12th at a joint board, school board meeting where they present their budget. You could defer action until that meeting pending the school board review.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Would you like to say your motion?
That would be, that would be a compromise.
I don't, I don't know that we need another motion. I just think we have an opportunity to do this on the 12th. We have the rates. They're just, they happen to be there and not here.
Yep.
I think that's a good, good point.
I think it's a good, it's a good compromise. And I think, Chip, you make a good point. I don't, I don't want to alienate you. This is a major project. If you guys are uncomfortable, and I'm at fault to some extent, then I need to help get you up to speed. And hopefully by the 12th, if you've got questions, ask away. Happy to meet with you.
Is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't need a motion then to get it on the agenda for the 12th?
I think you mentioned at the end of the meeting that you're having that for the purpose of entertaining the school board's presentation on their budget, but also adopting or authorizing execution of this contract by then. That will have put it after the school board, they would have an opportunity to-
Might be nice to get that motion from somebody other than me, though.
But I understand that we don't need a motion. Matt says we just need to mention at the end of the meeting that that's on the agenda.
That will be one of the items covered on the work session. I think you're-
Who's going to take responsibility for mentioning that? Chair?
So in a sense, you're deferring action on this until February 12th?
Yep.
Got it.
Good compromise.
Yep.
Alrighty, item D. Betty Muncie, airport easement application from Atlantic Broadband.
Yes. The, one of the projects that we've been working on for a few months has been replacement of the, it's called the sightminder equipment down at the airport. It is the self-fueling station that, that is used down there. And that, we no longer had support on the equipment that was there. And we were able to order a new, it's called the QT pod, but it's, it's a new system. And we've had it for several months. We took advantage of ordering it so that we could get a rebate on that. And it's been sitting down in the terminal building waiting for installation. And we've kind of, we're timing it so that we can coordinate installation of that with the regional airport over in Matapani. They also are getting the same upgrade. So part of, part of that installation is to have it tied into the internet system. And hopefully Kevin might have to help me on this. The internet connection that we have down there currently is not necessarily reliable. So we have contacted Atlantic Broadband to run a new line into there so that we can have reliable service that will stay up. And they, you can see on the second page of there, they've got a little sketch of where, how they will run the line into the terminal building or to the terminal area, fueling area off Plainview Road. And they need an easement to do that. So that is what I'm asking the board to grant an easement to Atlantic Broadband to run that internet cable.
Does anybody have any issues with that?
I've been having bad motions today, so let's-
Let's have a motion.
I'll move that the, go forward with the airport easement application from Atlantic Broadband.
Second.
Got a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Betty, we'll just keep you right on the hot seat with board and committee appointments.
Oh, I haven't even looked at these. I'm sorry.
Starts on page 127.
I've got, I've got it off. We have several vacancies that we've received applications for. John Anzavino has submitted an application, I believe that's for the EDA, to take the unexpired term of Michael Lowe, who's moved out of the county. And I don't have his application and resume in there. And I don't remember when Mike Lowe's term expires. But if you choose to accept this application, if you could just say that you're doing it for the unexpired term. Then we have an application from Janice Reed. He has applied to be reappointed as a member of the Economic Development Authority. That term actually expired January the 31st. So this is for a new four-year term. Warren White is the same, as, as to be reappointed to the EDA for a four-year term. And then Emily Davies has submitted an application to be appointed to fill an unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is to take Roger Anglin's unexpired term.
So unlike last month, we have no duplicate applications for the same position. The only one is the first one is for an unexpired term.
Right.
Robert Wells.
Robert Wells has, also wants to be reappointed to the BZA.
The BZA, yeah.
BZA, yes. So that is all.
Okay, so we have, the first one is for an unexpired term yet to be determined. And the others are for re-upping positions that they're already in.
The other, Emily Davies is for an unexpired term.
Okay.
I move that we approve all appointees as laid out in pages 127 through 144 of the packet.
But you weren't going to make any more motions?
Let's see if I'm back.
We, we have a motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Who seconded?
Kathy.
And Mr. Chairman Spiner is saying John Anzavino is here tonight. So just to recognize John, there he is.
Congratulations. I say congratulations. Alrighty, we get to the amended part of our agenda and turn this over to John Koontz to talk about broadband budget supplements.
Thank you. So the broadband authority has been working, I've been working on it for over a year at this point with Kevin and our chair members. And we're to a point now where we've talked with Bowman Engineering about designing our conduit that we're going to lay through the Puller Highway in conjunction with the water project. And we've got costs associated with that over the course of the next year. The good news is, we did allocate some funds towards this for this year and next year. I think this year it's $50,000 and next year it's $60,000. But the estimates have come back from Bowman, and I won't steal Kevin's thunder. But Kevin, as executive director, would you mind saying a few words about where we stand on this project?
Sure. So as we get into the technical aspects of deploying the fiber, we kind of realized there were some challenges with fiber that didn't necessarily mirror those of water deployment. So, you know, even though it looks like normal PVC in the ground, there's a need to be strategic about things such as handpools, vaults, locations of nodes where there are targets of opportunity. So to that end, Bowman brought Fishel, Team Fishel on board to address those types of issues that would necessarily obtain to a water system. So, you know, as the executive director, I feel like I have the technical acumen regarding fiber deployment to know what I don't know. And in my estimation, it's imperative to proceed in an expeditious but thoughtful way so that we don't incur unforeseen costs in the construction phase. And so that's why it's important for us to have that technical piece as we proceed. And there's some costs associated.
And so at this point, with the numbers that we have back suggest that we're going to need to approach this board for $65,000 to get through the engineering phase of the conduit deployment that takes the conduit almost in an identical footprint as, as the water. When it gets to Delta Ville, that, that water routing of pipes spreads out more intricately than what we need to do with a backbone essentially that would offer some competition to the only provider of fiber in the county at this point. So, and that, that covers not only the engineering for this project almost in whole, without really considering some contingency down the road over a year from now. But also, we've employed sparsely legal counsel that has specialty in broadband deployment in rural communities at the request or suggestion of our county attorney, who felt that that was an area where we needed to bolster our, our skill set, so.
And this, this funding is, is needed by your authority prior to the budget year that we're working on now. So Karissa's a request now?
Correct. This is a request now so that we can be ready once all the easements are acquired. So, so from a project standpoint, we have to step through the easements. And we're, I don't know if we're catching up with the Water Authority, but we're, we're closer to where they are now, which is a good thing because the whole idea is this is a dig once opportunity. What makes this a no-brainer is that our costs are greatly reduced by the fact that there's already a water project going in. If we were having to do this just all by ourselves, there's no water project, this is, this is a whole different consideration. But because that project's there, we're piggybacking and greatly reducing the funds. And I, and I pledge to you this, we're not giving up on looking for funding outside of the county. But as I mentioned earlier, we happen to be in that donut hole where we're not unserved. We are underserved, but we're not underserved enough to get the funding that everybody likes to talk about. I mean, we've got our whole board out beating the pavement looking for grant or even loans. And none of them, Middlesex doesn't qualify. We're, we're not poor enough in terms of our coverage.
Just as a simple-minded individual, I'm thinking about a conduit going in a ditch down about 18 miles, 18 miles long. What causes engineering costs to be that large on, this is not even putting the fiber in the conduit. This is just laying the conduit so fiber can go in it later. Are the, the nodes that turn off of that to, at different, what is it that drives that cost?
It's some of that. It's, you know, I think when we first started looking at this, it was like, okay, we'll open another trench right alongside, drop conduit down. But from my experience in electrical construction, you get to certain distances and you have to put in handholds or pool boxes or vaults. Because you can only go so far. Now, I can't speak to how different that is. When you blow in fiber, it, there's a lot less friction, there's a lot less weight than aluminum or copper. But it's also a much more fragile thing. You, you don't mess with fiber in the way that you can yank on copper. But there are also considerations from a technical, not technical, but from a user standpoint. Not just the physical, where we put in handholds and all that, but this idea of nodes. We have to do the research here within, the engineering and research here within the community as to, okay, the schools, those are a logic, logical place for a node because they're off-takers. You just heard BDH talking, maybe not necessarily about their Puller Highway situation, but that would be a node that we have to consider. So they have to understand not just the Puller Highway is a main artery. They have to understand where all the little capillaries come off of that artery. And so where do we place those nodes so that when we do blow the fiber in, it's actually of value? We're not going back and digging the thing back up and saying, boy, I wish we would have engineered that a little bit better.
Well, the manholes and some of those other things helped me understand a little bit more. And I, I don't guess there's any power boosting or anything along the way, is there? Is it?
Well, no, not, not that I can speak to. The other thing in terms of the nodes, though, is we do have multiple towers along the Puller Highway, some of which we already have access to, some of which we may see benefit in gaining access to. That also requires some engineering and some-
Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you. John, how, how close do these come to serving our three towers?
The whole idea is right to them. So, I mean, we're going to mimic the water path. I don't know of any of the towers that are looking to hook onto water, but they're pretty close to where the water path goes. That's the point where we do have to deviate from the water just to get to the base of that tower so that we have that opportunity to have wireless that is supported by a fiber backbone. That, that's probably our, that's probably what's going to gain us the most customers is by using those towers with a fiber backbone. But there's also going to be the opportunity to basically say to Atlantic, the only, the only constituent in the community that I've heard say, I just don't think if you put conduit in the ground, anybody's going to put fiber in it. There's only been one entity that has suggested that this is falling. It's Atlantic Broadband. And they don't want to see anybody doing that. Because now they're going to have competition. And, you know, we, we know what we're paying for each one of the laterals that comes off of their backbone into the various government facilities we're paying. We're getting smoked because there's no competition. And now, you know, you can decide as a broadband authority, how far down this road do you want to be? Do you want to become an internet service provider? Everybody that I've talked to says, hell, no. And we certainly, as a small community, we want no part in that. But we've, we've already spoken with the industry and there are numerous folks out there that are interested. You put the conduit in, that's the most of the expense. And if you do the engineering correctly, we'll blow the fiber in, we'll light it up and we'll serve your customers. And if, if that's the number we have to beat by the only person in town with the service, here we go. And now we've got free market competition. I mean, that, that's, that's a luxury we get by having waited on water and sewer infrastructure for 30 years. Now we're putting in broadband at the same time for a lot cheaper than most communities have had to. Or you can look at King and Queen, I guess it is. I mean, they have sort of a stopgap solution that's a lot cheaper, but their service isn't all that good with that. Is that King William or King and Queen?
King and Queen.
King and Queen. But, I mean, and that, that's a decision they made because they weren't putting in other infrastructure. And so they had to look at how much is this going to cost? And so they made a cost decision and said, we'll keep it cheaper and do a little bit better. We have the luxury because of the water going in to get a better service at a still a very affordable price.
And there's no way to put conduit to one of the towers and then wireless go to the other two towers? How much do you lose if you do that?
Enough. I mean, the, the whole point is, we've got this backbone that we can open up and it's going to be so cheap because we're already there and we're getting the easements and we're doing all that work. To stop at the first tower and then go wireless from there is to basically say to those people at the last tower, you know, we could have spent another nickel, but, you know.
And history kind of shows us that the demands of broadband are growing exponentially. And when you talk about a tower that's served like maybe by Verizon, you know, all of our phone calls travel along fiber. They hit the tower, the closest tower, and then they travel along fiber. So that, that really is the backbone. There's not really a better technology for handling all that data. And it can handle a tremendous amount of data.
Well, and Mr. Mueller made a good point in his public comments, and it was sewer-related. But, you know, we can't simply focus on the constituents that are coming potentially. We need to focus on the ones that are here. In this instance, I'm kind of doing the opposite of what Mr. Mueller's advocating for. I think his, his comments make a lot of sense for sewer and Kilmer Point and it merits review. But for broadband, there are going to be a number of people who I can bring broadband to their door and they're going to say, I got 4G on my phone. I really don't need it. And, and we're going to have to deal with that. And they already tell us that 50% is kind of the number of how many passes. Passes meaning when you go buy a household with your new service, only 50% of them are going to take that up. But in terms of us and our property rates and the taxes that we get and property values, these properties are automatically more valuable if people, when they're looking, say, oh, how are the schools? Good. How's the internet? Good. How are the property taxes? Low? Good. We're checking off all of these boxes in an attempt to raise our tax base. And, and I think historically, this, this group has all come to the conclusion that added infrastructure is probably the number one thing we can do, and it's water, sewer and profit. There it is.
Did you want to make the motion for that request or do you want somebody else to do it?
I'd like someone else to do it.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion being for $65,000 from current funding.
Yes. I'll second it.
Motion duly seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
No, this is $65,000 for engineering now.
Correct, ahead of this budget.
We have some money in the budget already that's not going to be used by the end of the year. What you actually need from fund balance to fund this is $32,000.
Nice.
Good.
Good.
Sorry.
Did, you have a second?
We have a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanna add that it's, it's in part Matt's diligence when we're doing our budget. You know, I asked a question this morning about, well, should we keep that number there? And he said, I don't think you should touch that. And he was very, very adamant about it. And Matt knows that if I disagree with him, we'll go toe-to-toe until one of us is, you know, corrected. But, but the point is, the reason we have some money in there to do that is not only did our county administrator anticipate this, but he does defend our fund balance. And I don't always agree with him, but when he's right, he's right.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So ordered. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I don't ever like to assume anything, but under county attorney updates, since our full-time attorneys out on maternity leave and our part-time attorneys in Aruba, I assume that we're not gonna have.
I, I would say we need to call him right now and get a report.
You got him on speed dial?
I got his cellphone number.
Be sure to not to have it on speakerphone. We don't want everybody to hear what he has to say.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, so we will move into county administrator update. And Matt, I would appreciate, I just didn't want you to forget the call I made to you last night after the airport committee meeting about expediting the tree treatment.
I understand. I've got a couple items that I did wanna brief the board on, not least of which is our sewer project with HRSD. Y'all have a copy of this report in your packet. There've been a couple of developments with regard to our ongoing project with HRSD. They're in the process of continuing to study all of these service areas, but they've essentially finished the preliminary engineering report for Cook's Corner, Christ Church. As originally proposed, they wanted to look at a step system, which is a grinder pump system and force main system to serve those areas. Through the preliminary engineering process, they have decided to opt for a gravity collection system. And of course, the board will recall our agreements with HRSD that we have in place pretty much call for the county to fund the collection systems within these areas, and they fund the treatment and any interceptor main costs there are pursuant to their policies. That's kinda where the project partnership and line of demarcation is. So, the gravity systems, as you can see, are more expensive. Whereas the initial step system for Cook's Corner and Christ Church amounted to roughly, well, the concept estimated cost was one point six million. The gravity system for Cook's Corner alone is one point six million. That includes the necessary force mains to get back to the interceptor main, and I'll address that in a moment. Christ Church, one point one million for the gravity system. And again, that includes the force main cost to come back to the interceptor main. Christ Church is pretty much on pause for now. We're concentrating on Cook's Corner largely because of grant reasons and the timetables we have in play for the grant. I'm gonna go on a tangent for one second and go over the project schedule as we have it. Of course, we're sitting here in February, and they're getting ready to start work on the typographical surveys. I added detail to those, subdivision plats and design submittals. We wanted to put this in front of the board tonight because before HRSD expends any more money towards final design of the system, they wanted to get authorization from the board and ask for a letter from us stating that, yes, we are comfortable with this design and proceed. And pardon me, I've got a little bit of a head cold, so I'm a little rattling. I'll go back to the project schedule in a moment for questions. One item that is still outstanding, HRSD has come up with a temporary plan, and I wanna stress that, a temporary plan to use an interceptor force main and bring in the Cook's Corner office complex grant-related facilities to the Saluda treatment plant for treatment. And when I say the grant-related facilities, I mean the workforce housing project and the brew pub economic development component. A very limited rationed amount that would be coming back to Saluda temporarily until they can deploy their overall plan of transmission mains, interceptor mains if you will, to collect all of our systems and carry it to Yorktown.
Matt, is, is the Saluda plant's ability to accept more effluent as well as empty the treated water into Urbana Creek? The addition of this sewage, is that still within the permit that Saluda has now?
It would have to be in order for them to get DEQ approval to do it.
Really?
So, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
The, the concept design of this interceptor main that they have is on the screen now. It essentially will run from Cook's Corner to the, what would become a pump station probably behind the regional jail at one time, and be treated at the regional jail. Now, one thing I wanna be very.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, that, thank you. One of the things I wanna be very clear on is this is a temporary treatment proposal, I guess for lack of a better term, cause ultimately, it's their design to put interceptor mains all the way down, and I do not have a depiction of this, cause it's still on their drawing boards, but interceptor mains all the way down thirty-three, across Twiggs Ferry, and connect to the interceptor main in Matthews to pump all the way to Yorktown or New York County, their Newport News treatment facility, I guess.
When they.
That line isn't large enough.
Well, they think it is, and we've quizzed them on that. So, real quickly, the project that they're proposing temporarily for this interceptor main to pump a very finite amount of effluent back in to be treated at the Saluda treatment plant would then be connected to in five to eight years, their larger interceptor main all the way down thirty-three to not only collect Saluda's treatment, or sewers, Saluda's sewer, but Cook's Corner sewer, Christ Church's sewer, Locust Hill sewer, Harmony Village's sewer, the Topping sewer coming from the campgrounds and the Topping service area, Hartfield sewer, and Delta Ville sewer through that transmission or interceptor main. I think we have some folks from Urbana here today. I'm not spilling any secrets when I say this, cause I think this has been discussed. They don't know how, they don't know what route, but ultimately, what they would like to do is pump the effluent from the Urbana treatment plant over to this interceptor main to move that effluent completely out of the county as well. So, their timeframe for that project's five to eight years, cause that's a lot of interceptor main, and it's a lot of money. But they are confident that if they put that interceptor main in, that's gonna handle our sewer needs for the next forty to fifty years.
So, for the stretch from Cook's Corner to Saluda, initially what it's saying is for the five to eight years before the whole big system is in, we're gonna pump from Cook's Corner up to Saluda. Then, once everything else is built, we're gonna flip it around and now Saluda's gonna be pumping down all the way to York.
Exactly, exactly. Under no scenario is there a design or desire to expand the treatment plant behind the regional jail to have a more capacity. If anything, it's to turn that treatment plant more into a glorified pump station to pump it to Yorktown.
And if, if that, for some reason, does not become the plan, the Cook's Corner office complex is in no jeopardy of not having a sewer solution because they will pump and haul if for some reason this gets tied up for any reason?
They have, they have verbally stated so. That's their intention. However, if you notice, the project schedule, pardon me, the project schedule is backdated from June twentieth, two thousand twenty, or June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. That would be the project, project completion timeline.
Matt, it's my understanding that the water that would find its way to be treated and then get into Urbana Creek is cleaner than the water that's in the creek.
That, that's generally my understanding.
And probably cleaner than most rainwater runoff? What I'm getting at is, for the citizens that would be concerned about contaminating Urbana Creek further, I don't know if we can get those measures so that people would know that this is not, even though it's temporary, it's not gonna be hurting anything, cause I don't believe that it is. We charge the DEQ and the EPA and all these folks with giving us the, the clean water standards so that we don't pollute our waterways, but if we could find some of that information just to allay any citizen angst over it, it might be worthwhile.
Well, and as Hampton Roads unveils this more publicly, I should say, even though I'm doing it here publicly, this is the game plan that they're moving forward with, and these are the talking points of our agreement, they're gonna be answering more and more of those questions. What makes me a little optimistic about this project is that with one, with one interceptor force main, once it's deployed, we can connect a variety of connection or sewer service areas to it, and it's relatively maintenance-free for the Hampton Road Sanitation District, cause they're pumping that effluent down to Essential Treatment Works, which is part of the SWIFT project. Again, that's their plan, within five to eight years. So, what this does for us is it gives us a little bit of flexibility in that we fund the Cook's Corner gravity system on the near term, and then we continue to hold that funding for the other projects for five to eight years to come online with the interceptor force mains.
So, the earliest there would be another sewer collection system would be five years?
Not necessarily. This is something that's still somewhat abstract, but if I can, I'll go back to Google Earth. It's not a meeting unless I go to Google Earth at least once. We're so close to Christ Church, as they construct that interceptor main down the road, it's entirely practicable, or excuse me, let me come back the other way. They'll probably start from over here and construct back this way. It's, it's entirely practical for them to connect Hartfield, then Harmony Village, then Topping, and Delta Ville as the project unfolds. What they can't do is send any more effluent back to the Saluda Treatment Works. Ultimately, the end of the line would be the treatment plant in Urbana, I would imagine. But I can't speak to that because I'm not Hampton Road Sanitation District. They may wanna build it all at once.
But I guess when you say five to eight years, does that mean that they don't start coming in off of one ninety-eight until five years from then?
Potentially. Yes, ma'am. It, it's really a function of when they can fit it into their capital budget and start the project. They're fitting this project in, and they have goals to fit the other in in five to eight years.
So, the money that we're putting aside for the collection systems, would we go ahead and start building collection systems before they?
Pay for the engineering, get ready to go? Yes, ma'am. We, we would have some use for that money to make sure that we have the collection systems in place, maybe even start constructing parallel to their interceptor mains, so they're ready to come online when those interceptor mains are placed into service. It's an ambitious project, it's an exciting project, but it is substantially different. When we embarked upon this partnership with HRSD, we had talked about subsurface dispersion and, and subsurface, small package-type treatment systems and the subsurface dispersion in basically drain field. They've elected to pursue this route instead with interceptor mains back to York.
Now, the deployment of this system will be slightly more expensive, or it will be more expensive in, in your, in your notes.
Deployment of our gravity systems will be more expensive.
What about the cost to, is there a projection for the hookups? So, the customer, the ultimate customer, will it be more expensive?
It's, it's our understanding from Hampton Road Sanitation District that their connection fees are general across their entire service area. So, the connection fees for this area would not be any more than a connection fee in, say, Newport News.
I guess, and, and I'm sorry to belabor this, but if, if, I would assume that Hampton Roads wants to go in this direction because once the system's operating.
Yes, ma'am.
It will be more efficient from their end, and, you know, more profitable. So, how does that happen? If it costs more, then where, where do they get more money?
Well, I, I think Hampton Roads is not looking at this project as a moneymaker, to be sure, but they are statutorily responsible for providing sewer services to communities to go to them and ask them to do so. So, this isn't a situation where they're looking to make money so much as provide service.
But, okay, but lose less. I mean, what, what, I don't understand what the incentive is for this system from their point of view, and maybe.
As I understand their rationale, they were a little concerned about the smaller, multiple decentralized plants with drip dispersion because they were concerned about operating and maintenance costs in the future, O and M costs.
So, it's future operational costs is what they're worried about?
It's future operation cost, and, and they're also seeing the big picture in that they know they've got fairly extensive renovations and improvements that they need to make to the Urbana treatment plant. And we also have Bethpage Campground interested in a potential expansion and, and other developments down there. And as we heard tonight, we have folks in Kilmer's Point that are interested in hooking on the sewer. So, all of that taken into consideration, they, I guess, felt that the transmission or interceptor main is a better way to go.
Matt, I, I, I'm totally confused. Right now, Matthews is pumping along a six-inch line. They had to make it a small line so that they didn't get followed. We're talking about now pumping everything from the campground.
All the way down to Delta.
Delta Ville, all the way down, and, and teeing into that six-inch line, which they put in knowing that it was gonna be small. All the sewage from Middlesex County is gonna go into a six-inch line.
That's what they're engineering.
Matt, is there any way we can get an engineering response from one of the engineers that's doing the calculations that can meet Pete's mechanical standards? I mean, cause he's asking a county administrator for an engineering.
And, and I'm, I've asked the same questions of HRSD, and they've said yes.
It was too small.
We have the executive director reaching out to Pete individually.
Perfect.
Yeah, and, and Pete, from my understanding, Ted Hanifin's gonna give you a call and talk to you about some of that. He's in Albuquerque right now. He's gonna call you as soon as he is able to. But you're asking the same questions we've asked, and I was a little surprised myself that they think they can make it work.
But I've been told that we couldn't go into that.
Yeah.
I, that's.
I, I recall.
That's obviously the place to put it, if you could go into.
They think.
And I was told that it couldn't go into the six-inch line because it was too small.
I was in the meeting when we were told that, I recall, but they now think they can make that work. Timing, volume.
So, is it, is it fair for, for this meeting? I mean, if Ted's gonna call you, you're gonna get free crack at him to have him answer that? I think, I think you need an engineer response, and you've got an administration response, right? If, if Ted calls you, I'd, I'd be happy to hear what he says to you, cause you're asking a good engineering question, in my mind, but I don't.
And this is an HRSD problem. Well, I, I'm asking the question because I was told that the reason that we weren't going into that line was because it was too small.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in a meeting when you were told that. I recall that. It was about five years ago, cause we had discussed various options with them at that point in time. It's been a long partnership, and.
Pete, would you let me know how that goes with Ted, if you, if you feel like you get the response you want? Because I think if you're not getting a response from the Ted Hanifin level, then we need.
If we don't get it from Ted Hanifin, we're not gonna get the.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I think you've already got the right person calling you, assuming he actually called you. Thank you.
And if that's not confusing enough, on to the interceptor main cost. HRSD has an estimated interceptor main cost between Saluda and Cook's Corner of two point three million dollars. Now, we've asked them to look at that number and estimate fairly hard because we feel like that's a high estimate for a variety of reasons. But if they're paying those costs, that's them. They have suggested that HRSD policy states that if you're within two miles of an existing treatment works, that at least a portion of those costs would be shared, and that is the ongoing negotiation that I have with them. The chairman and I have a, a conference call with Ted. The chairman and I have a conference call with Ted and a couple of officials with HRSD. I'm not asking the board tonight to do anything with this number. I am asking if we do want to move forward with the gravity sewer system in Cook's Corner, that you authorize me to pretty much go ahead and tell them what we already have. We have it in the budget to do, and that's going to be the estimated cost all in for the Cook's Corner Gravity Sewer System, $1.6 million. And that includes $221,000 of contingencies. What they've asked me for is a letter authorizing them to move forward with that final design.
Ladies and gentlemen, do we have...
You wouldn't like to wait until I get a little bit better?
On this one, I'd like to get authorization. And the reason why is we've already included monies in the budget for all of these projects in concept. We're just actually further down the road with more detailed preliminary engineering and basically waiting for authorization to proceed with the final design. And we did discuss it last month during the update.
Well, Cook's Corner can't go forward without it.
And I understand, I'm not talking about the county spending $1.6 million in any one budget year. This is the amount that ultimately we would finance or reimburse through an agreement with Hampton Road Sanitation District. They're leading this project, they're bidding it out, and they're doing that component piece. So this is probably new debt service that would come on board, potentially as early as next year.
Which we've got roughly $850,000 in the budget.
You have money in the budget, already budgeted.
Not going to be a tax increase or anything else because of this, that money's already allotted.
And the estimated, the estimated debt service on that component piece would be, well, for both Cook's Corner and Christchurch would be $148,000, I believe.
Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Yeah, we got to do it.
Second question made by Mr. Jesse, and second is by Mr. Coons, is there any further discussion?
Just let us know how that Ted Henneffin call goes, please.
I will, and for this vote, I'm going to abstain, I'm not voting against, I'm abstaining.
Understood.
I'll vote twice, though.
Okay, that's good.
I don't think you can do that.
Hearing no further discussion, call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So ordered with one abstention.
And I will forward a letter letting them know that we have authorized proceeding with the collection system only in Cook's Corner.
But I would just like to restate that this main going over to Matthews and all, this is Hampton Road Sanitation District's problem. This is not anything that'll impact us budget-wise or whatever. If they've got to increase their transmission line to handle it, or put in faster pumps, or do whatever, that's their baby.
They've elected to go the interceptor main route.
Yeah. Matt, how can we get in writing what they've said verbally in terms of pump and haul? Because I can envision five to eight years from now, us being pumping to Saluda from Cook's Corner and wondering when our force main's going to be going down to Matthews. Economics change, we get into a recession, HRSD's mandate isn't as strong as it once was, and now we're delaying all these sewer projects. What is our hesitation with having them go ahead and write that down for us, that they'll pump and haul?
It's perhaps something we could have in our reimbursement agreement, because there's some of these costs, like for instance, the engineering and construction, construction administration, construction inspection expenses. Those are expenses that we would probably want to reimburse Hampton Road Sanitation District along the way and not borrow those money, because we have it in the budget to do so, and only borrow the amount of construction. So once we have the reimbursement agreement in place, that could be a function of that, I would say. They have committed to supporting the county on the grant project, they're committed to do so.
I guess what I'm asking is...
We wanted it right.
If you can get it in writing without pissing them off, very good.
But, and I agree with John, I mean, they've asked us to put into writing authorization to move with the final design, I mean...
Yep, they just want to make sure we mean it.
Right, well, I want to make sure they mean it.
Yeah, that's right.
Absolutely, do later, and then that will be done. Okay, my last item tonight is the transient occupancy tax. I wish I had good news, but House Bill...
That's the last item.
That's, this is going to be my last item, unless y'all have other questions.
Tree trimming is the last item.
I'm sorry?
The tree trimming at the airport.
Wait, and I think Betty's going to address that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
House Bill 2404 was defeated on the floor of the House. It enjoyed a great deal of support through the subcommittee and committee process. I'll give you his, kind of a brief timeline on the bill's development. Of course, we requested the bill very early on in the supplemental process. Matthews requested to be a part of it, they were made a part of it. Keith introduced the bill at subcommittee. New Kent County was added as a substitute, through a substitute bill, and then ultimately in a committee of, the next level committee, I guess, committee of the whole or whatnot, or Finance Committee, Appomattox County was added to the bill. So by the time it made it to the floor, Middlesex, Matthews, New Kent, and Appomattox were all asking for authorization to levy, or to pass ordinance to allow the levy of up to 5% lodging taxes allowed by code. When it made it to the floor, there were a number of headwind issues that worked against it. And the vote was 62 in favor, 31 against. It needed a two-thirds majority to pass, and it did not reach it. The New Kent County Administrator and I have been in touch. We have some language that we may want to work with Keith and his delegate, I think it's delegate piece, to introduce next year that may give us a little bit better chance, and maybe even seek bipartisan support or patronage of the bill, so it doesn't descend upon party lines as much. I think two things worked against the bill this year. One, there were some election year issues, a number of delegates coming up for election and may not wanted to have been thought of as supporting a tax bill. And there were some other political items happening at the time that may have worked against it as well. But as a result, we've started making adjustments to this year's budget and to fiscal year '20 budget that we had started work on. We probably will not be able to resubmit the bill until next year. Well, we won't be able to resubmit the bill until next year.
So we'll go from administrator to assistant administrator on the tree trimming.
Oh, I was just, you had told me to make sure we got moving on it, so I should be on my list.
The necessary body will understand, the airport committee met last night, we had a number of issues going on, but the precision lighting for landing, particularly at night, but also during the daytime, has been down for a period of time. The airport is closed to night activities, we have some commercial activity up there that is having to give up their business because of that. And the notice to airmen is out that the airport is not to be used after dark and before sunrise. So we really, we needed to get the trees on both ends of the runway trimmed to get them out of the glade slope in order to properly set those lights. And as I understand it, we were moving forward, but there was some landscaping that we hadn't gotten a price on that was holding things up. And I just would like to see the tree trimming part of it go ahead and happen as soon as possible, and then we'll do the landscaping as we get to bids. Okay.
We'll take a look at it.
All righty then.
And Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding John McCallum will be here on March 5th.
Yes, yes, we had the presentation, his assistant, last night. Who would like to start off on unfinished business? Pete?
Uh, I have none.
None from me, John, Kathy, we'll start with new business from you, coming back the other way.
No, no new business.
Ooh, this is working out well, not many new business. All righty then, supervisor comments and reports, Pete, we're down at your end, so let's start there.
Okay.
Okay, Wayne?
I attended legislative day last weekend up at Richmond, attended general assembly, and also went to support supervisor, visit Keith Hodges' office, and then basically talked about the bill that didn't get voted through. Also attended the Middle Peninsula Land Commission. We, well, one of the most important things we talked about was that reverse mortgage that a lot of homes with the seven-tank pump-out, because they had two liens on the homes and different things like that, it would be almost impossible for them to even borrow money to repair their seven-tank. So they're finding out that, you know, with that reverse mortgage, it's not really a good thing for the lower-income people that want to try to fix their seven-tank because of the processing of the reverse mortgage. So it's not a good thing for certain people. And then we just discussed about general reviews of the assembly, general assembly bills and different things like that. Middle Peninsula Alliance, we want to meet till next week, and last week, we didn't, last month, we didn't meet. And that's it for committee reports.
Thank you, sir. At what point did we want to get it into the record that we were deferring Item C, the Cook's Corner renovation project, to the 12?
I think when you adjourn the meeting tonight.
Okay, all right, I'll go ahead and stay in rotation here. We had a joint finance committee meeting with the schools. Matt and David Cretz and I also met on-site at the airport about moving that house that ended up being somewhat of a fiasco, but hopefully in the middle of next month, we'll have something, something final on that. Water Authority met again this month, I was asked to speak at the Middlesex County Republican Committee meeting, and I did that. We had an emergency services committee meeting, and last night, a very good airport committee meeting. And I'd like to report that there is some regional interest in developing the runway realignment. There are several other counties that benefit from having an airport. There is a void in our area, the Virginia Department of Aviation hasn't just said, please submit your paperwork, they said, in order to be approved for your change of designation, we need this, this, and this. So I feel good about that moving forward, and I think it can be a pretty good economic driver for the county, particularly if we've got regional support for it, which is what I like. John?
Yeah, I want to respond to some of the public comments, particularly around the Cook's Corner office complex, Middlesex Foundation projects. I don't see any jeopardy of us losing grants or having delays that cost us cost overruns. I mean, I think we've addressed the options that we have from a sewer perspective. I think water will be in time. So, you know, I also, I'm going to plug this twice, I'm going to have another town hall February 15th at Free Shade Community Center. I'm hoping to spend a lot of time talking about budget and the stuff that we've been here since 9:30 talking about. But my town halls, if any of you've been there, they're open to anything and everything that impacts Middlesex, but that might be a better time for us to have a dialogue as opposed to me pontificating from this spot, so that you can understand why I'm not as concerned as the average citizen about that project. I've been to the Middlesex Foundation meetings every month for the better part of a year, and that group is top-notch, and they are on top of making sure that that project shepherds those grant funds to fruition alongside the county funds that have been committed. As far as the renovation of the east wing of the high school, I think what we're actually seeing is this board beginning to put that back into the focus. You probably saw me this evening getting a little frustrated with talking about projects that are on the capital improvement plan, but then sort of stalling when it comes time to make a decision. I think here with the east wing, Jack Miller, who sat up here not so long ago, was talking about when we'd come back to this project. And it's now been more than enough time has passed that wing of the high school is... I've got a friend that teaches there, I've been in his classroom this year, it's a mess. But we're addressing that now, and I can understand the concerns. If you just read the Sentinel or the Tea Leaves or Talk with Neighbors, you know, it can seem like we haven't done our diligence and that we're not getting enough bids. Unfortunately, I think what's actually the case is, as we discussed here, these are not the most attractive projects for capital and for engineering and architectural firms. That's one of the plights that we have as a small rural community. It's similarly, when we go and talk to our representation, Ryan McDougall and Keith Hodges, Dr. Greetz and I went to Richmond a couple of weeks ago to lobby on behalf of rural schools. It's the same economy of scales issue. These projects are small potatoes to the bigger entities, and that's why it is extremely important that you're reaching out, not just to your supervisors, but to your delegates and senators at the state level. They need to understand that the more Virginia pushes the responsibility to the supervisors to administer all these programs and now fund them as well, and yet we don't have taxing authority to do this. It's contingent on constituents like you, and especially you, because you are the active public that watches these things, to go out to your friends and say, let's talk to Ryan McDougall, let's talk to Keith Hodges. And, you know, if we can't do anything from a tax policy standpoint out here, if we can't even get a lodging tax increase from 2% to 5%, then why are you sending more requirements down to small rural bodies that are underfunded? I can't go to my constituents and talk about raising property taxes if I can't say that I looked at a lodging tax first. I did look at a lodging tax, I lobbied, I went, I talked to Keith Hodges. He thinks he's frustrated with the fact that I've got people in Albemarle County telling me how you people should be taxed. I can tell him I'm pretty frustrated, because I have to look you in the faces at my town hall meetings and explain why we're probably looking at another property tax increase. So I encourage you to get the word out amongst your friends and relatives here in Middlesex, February 15th, Free Shade Community Center, 6 o'clock. I just think those are the dialogues that are most important. I need to hear from you for longer than three minutes at some times. And you need to not just blindly trust that I'm researching the issues of the day, but bring more information to me from out there in the rest of the county. And I will do my part to go to our state senators and delegates and continue to advocate on behalf of my constituents that this is our county and will run it, thank you very much. And to the extent that the bill and rule is going to continue to exist, we'll come to you hat in hand asking for you to pass lodging tax legislation, but pass it, damn it. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir, Ms. White-Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just give a shout-out and commend the Middlesex Museum and Historical Society, again, the N double I C P, of the, a program that was here on January 6th was just outstanding on the case Green versus the Board of Education. And it was written up in the Sentinel, and there are videos of it. But I, it was special that day because of the dialogue that was fostered and the very good exchange between members of the audience and the panelists who came. And it's worthwhile mentioning just because it's become even more apparent how valuable those kind of discussions are. So I'm very glad that the people, all volunteers who are part of those organizations, put it together, because I just think it's great, and I'd love to see it happen again, a similar type of thing. I've been out to the airport for a tour around, get an idea. And as Chip mentioned, the idea here, the intention, is to improve safety at the airport by lengthening the runway. So the discussion is, well, it would be, perhaps, it would be better to realign it if it was being lengthened, and that's what the feasibility studies and the recommendations are now be coming forward. So again, a lot of hard work there. The community programs management team funding continues with those meetings and just, you know, so people know that Social Services does an outstanding job going above and beyond, in my opinion, in trying to find every resource available to help children in our community who are in trouble and/or in troubled circumstances through no fault of their own. Planning Commission, I also attended that meeting, and we'll have the matters from that coming up. As Dr. Greetz mentioned, the Career and Technical Education Program at the high school, I went and spent some time there with Melvina Robinson, gave me a great overview, and I really learned a lot about how the opportunities are held for students and the career planning that starts in middle school, so that each student has a Plan A and Plan B as they go through school, so they can meet the goals and get the classes they need in order to do what they want to do. There's a lot of... There's a lot of really good work going on there, and I'll be going back. Just a heads up, Arts in the Middle, which is a Fest Arts Festival on June first and second, we're looking for, to facilitate a visit during that time from the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts, and we'll be doing some scheduling for that, so good things happening there. Keep Middlesex Beautiful, we'd like to revitalize that committee, and through grant funding, some grant funding, some pass-through funding, some county money, we've been able to increase the pickups to three times a month, be able to fund that on the secondary roads is what are picked up using deputies who are compensated for time and inmates, and trying to foster more community groups to do that. There's some work going on there. Anyone who's interested, send me a message, I'd be happy to put you on touch. General Assembly Day was, I think, very worthwhile, and it was nice to meet a hardworking Senate staffer who had a connection to Middlesex County with Jordan Stewart, who's Ryan McDougall's aide, and her grandparents are here, so it's very nice to have that connection right there. And like they said, the work was done. We also had a briefing there from the Adanus lobbyist who's funded through our contribution to the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission. So we're getting some benefits there from some expertise that seems to me as valuable. And Airport Committee, yeah, the superintendents from Lancaster who came see that airport as valuable for economic development, so I hope that that gets known.
Is that Jason Bellows?
Jason Bellows and Bob.
Doctor.
Good, Bob Sumner.
Yeah.
Westbrook.
Yeah, that's it.
And Oscar Barbour was probably the driving force behind planting that seed for regional work, and I think that's a good thing. Does that complete you, Kathy?
Yes.
If there is no other business to come before the regular session of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors, we will recess until seven PM, at which time we have two public hearings. See y'all back then if you feel like, but we will reconvene our monthly Middlesex County Board of Supervisors meeting with a public hearing, and the first is the Capital Improvements Plan to be presented by David Kretz.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the Middlesex County Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year 2019, 2023. Of course, I think everybody on the board is aware, this is strictly an advisory document. It's intended for use as capital facilities planning and is not a request for actual funding or county's capital, it's not a budget. It's intended only as a planning tool to assist the board. Of course, we know that, it's just advisory. I think the board is well aware of this. I'm going to kind of go through what, I think everybody knows what a capital improvements plan is. Of course, Cota Section fifteen, two, 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 three, nine of the Code of Virginia authorizes the planning and the preparation of the documents, and it's at the direction of the board, of course. And the Capital Improvements Committee met on December eleventh, prioritized department requests as they received. This plan, as a result of work, comes of the commission with the CIP Committee's recommendation prioritization. This is an update to the previously adopted capital improvements plan and contains some new projects. Staff recommends approval. We can see that it was an eight to zero vote, all were in favor of it, two absent, one abstained, and staff also recommends approval of the CIP plan for 2019, 2023. Mr. Walker, if the board wishes to see the document, I think they've already seen it, it's on that flash drive.
Very good.
Any other questions I can answer? If not, I'll turn it over to the board to entertain.
Anybody have any questions today?
I've got one additional comment on Dave's presentation. The board is very familiar with the Cooks Corner project, and we did have some public comment earlier tonight that would suggest that maybe we're rushing a couple of those capital improvements projects forward in order to move forward with the Cooks Corner project. You may recall in our public presentations and our meetings and our town hall meetings on the Cooks Corner project early on, we basically stated the reason why we had moved some of these capital improvement projects up, like this school bus garage, which is not ranked all that high on our capital improvements list, but one of the reasons we moved it up is because by doing those projects together at one time, we were able to leverage so many, so much more financial, more financial funding from the state through grants and the federal government as well through the CDBG project. In essence, by renovating some of the blighted structures, by relocating the bus garage, by facilitating the redeployment of the building in Cooks Corner and the economic development component to that, along with the workforce housing, we checked all of the boxes on that Vibrant Communities Initiative Grant, which leveraged a lot more state funding to help go into the project as a whole. So while these are commitments of the county, these are county capital improvements projects that have been on the plan for a long time, and by us doing them all together in culmination together or holistically together, rather, we're able to leverage those state and federal resources and bring some grant dollars back. Yes, it's moving them up, but it's also helping us leverage state and federal monies here from Middlesex County to implement what will be a transformational project for the community.
Which wouldn't be anywhere nearly as nice as we anticipated it being if the old bus garage stays in its current location.
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step aside and allow you to.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? Anybody wish to make a public comment on the summary? In that case, we will close public comment, and I suppose if somebody wanted to make a motion, it would be in order at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, I recommend we agree with the capital improvement plan FY twenty nineteen through FY twenty twenty-three update.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? No, second. Motion duly seconded, there's no discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So ordered. Thank you very much. David Kretz, run the sound, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, this is Ordinance Amendment two thousand eighteen oh five. I'm going to not read all of that, I'm going to move through the, down to the bullet points and get to the highlights of this particular ordinance amendment. The basic, these are the main items that we're dealing with in this ordinance. What's happened is they're going to increase the maximum five acre limit for solar facilities large scale to a maximum of ten acres. Now, the second item is they're going to increase the solar energy facility scale from five acres to fifty acres. And then what's going to be done is they're going to create a new definition that's going to fall in the gap for small utility scale that would have a maximum allowable area of fifty acres. You can see there's two utility scale facilities now. Also, we'll be adding a solar energy facility, small utility scale is a special exception use in resource hortigraphy, LDR, agricultural village, community, and general business. Large-scale solar energy facilities will remain as a permitted use. However, conditions contained within the special exception criteria have been extruded out and used as a basis for conditions for the, by right permitted use large scale. We've done that to help negate the negative impacts such as screening requirements and that type of thing. You'll notice that one thing we did remove was a requirement for the surety and the decommissioning portion of that. In talking with the applicant and the general conversation we had with the ordinance committee, it made, most of these large scale are going to be more or less accessory-type operations. They're going to be in conjunction with a use that's probably there, and the cost of servicing a surety, even on the staff's side.
Servicing any what?
When you have a surety bond for, you know, for instance, on a utility scale solar facility, we have a, that particular entity that does that needs to have a surety for decommissioning that would be in perpetuity of the project. These smaller scale facilities, it wouldn't be cost efficient or cost economically, it wouldn't be economically feasible to service this particular bond for these smaller facilities, especially in light that they're probably associated with a use, such as a school, it may be a small business or something of that nature. So then, on the other hand, we'd have staff that would have to maintain the servicing and make sure it's in place, so you have a lot of moving parts. So it was a general consensus between the applicant and the committee and the planning commission that that one item's removed from the special exception criteria only on the by right, not on the utility scale, and the small utility scale will still have that provision in it. It's just these smaller incidental sites will have that one.
Well, don't we have that on the solar fields on Route thirty-three?
Well, let me, I'll back up one. That was done under a whole different.
Understand, but we've got surety that if that thing is ever decommissioned, that somebody at non-county expense is going to have to remove everything above ground and down to three feet under, is what I understand.
Not on that facility, and I'll explain that, because at the time, that was determined to be by right per the previous determination, whereas the only thing that we, we did not have special exception, that property was not subject to special exception criteria.
Right, because it was by right.
Because they had vested rights in the by right. We currently have a project coming up that the planning commission will hear next week for the Churchview facility. That does have the special exception criteria that the board has approved for that particular site, I think they did it last year, and that major site plan has to adhere to that special exception criteria, and the surety bonding will be a requirement in that project, but not the one in Hartfield. So we're kind of, we hope that the property owners have taken proper precautions in-house to make sure that that's decommissioned properly.
Well, I'm all for the green power, I don't want anybody to misunderstand, but we are dealing with an industry, which when I asked the folks for development on thirty-three, I said, would this be happening without government subsidy? And the answer was, no.
Right.
So we're dealing with something that's not self-sustaining yet, hopefully it'll get there, and so I am concerned about the failure potential of a field that we could be left hanging with an eyesore or whatever. And piggybacking on that, some of the negative comments that I received about that field is, wouldn't it be nicer if it was a mile off of the main road and not right on the main, it'd be on a side road somewhere. So just in thinking and looking forward.
Right.
I think we're for this, I'm for green power.
Right.
We're going to sort our way through it, but it is a young industry, and I'd hate to jump head over heels into something that had it not work out the way we hoped.
And I think we'd all like to see them well off the road and in obscure places, but the problem is the grid is along the main highways and byways, so I think that's where it's most favorable for them to construct them at this time anyway, until they get other infrastructure.
A wire in a ditch out to the main road.
Pardon me?
A wire in a ditch out to the main road.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, anyway, that's the only difference with the large scale, that is a by right, and we did place a lot of conditions on that by right. So we do have some provisions in to screen it and some of the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, to try to negate the negative impact as much as possible. Also, for facilities proposed in village, community, and general business, special setback requirements were added, not only for screening and buffering purposes, but also for the purposes of promoting standard development that is currently supported as either a permitted or special exception use. On a piece of property, in other words, if you had, we're requiring a one thousand foot setback in village, community off a primary highway and a two hundred foot setback off a secondary highway. But what we wanted to make sure of, there wasn't any confusion that if somebody, you could have a dual use on the property. In other words, somebody could put a utility scale solar facility in the back, and we could still have a McDonald's or whatever we want in the front. It doesn't prohibit, that setback doesn't, we wanted to make sure that setback didn't get misconstrued down the future where everything had a setback a thousand feet. So we put the provision in there to make sure that we handled that, so.
So Dave, just real quick, if a McDonald's or any business wanted to operate a solar array as an accessory use, they would still be allowed?
Well, yeah, that would maybe come under the other provision for small scale, under the different scale rather than.
Just to provide power on-site for that use. That would probably be considered accessory?
Well, not necessarily accessory, in our minds, it's accessory, but there is an actual use for it. We can, it is subservient to the main use, it's there for the purposes of that, so there are provisions, and I think that would probably go back to this scale, the small, or actually the large scale would probably fit in that checkbox or an on-site, for the person, for the use of the property itself, for an on-site use. Nothing would prohibit them from using the back portion as one of the other scales that are otherwise permitted in that district, subject to those conditions. Any questions on any of that?
Questions?
On to the next. Also, in reviewing this, we've been kind of, at least I have anyway, been stammering around in the dark trying to, you know, we use a major site plan review for utility scale solar facilities. I mean, it seemed reasonable to do that, so I did it. We're adding language in the ordinance that dictate, it gives somebody that's interested in these sites a little extra, they can go to the ordinance and they can see, okay, we need this process, you know, we're going to have to get a special exception, then we're going to have to go over and get a major site plan, or if they're doing a smaller scale, it may qualify for a minor site plan for some of the small-scale facilities. But this gives that person that's looking into it and also staff down in the future better guidance as to how to route these different facilities through the site plan That's the highlights of the ordinance. If there's any other questions, or I know there's a lot of wording and a lot of language in that ordinance, I broke it down to a lower common denominator for the staff report, and I tried to break it down even again for this PowerPoint presentation, so.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. So it looks like it's been a long day for y'all, so if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
We can ask our questions now and later if we want to, I think we're going to probably have a public comment that might shed some light on it. All right, we'll reserve the right to ask you a question, because I predict we've got at least one public comment.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
At this point, we'd invite comments from the public.
How you all doing today? My name is Bobby Joe, so I work for Sun Tribe Solar. We're honored to have worked with you all on our Jay Hodges project, which provides solar power to the county's middle and elementary schools. You know, we believe as a company that anyone who desires, you know, to develop a renewable energy project should have the opportunity, and through our development of Jay Hodges, we identified a few small ordinance changes that we think would help better allow us and companies like us to serve the county, its citizens, and its taxpayers with that goal for renewable energy. I just wanted to come up and provide the opportunity to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I was at the planning commission meeting when they did this, so my questions are answered then.
My question was, at large scales, our solar farm that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Have any counties or anyone profited anything for like money for fire department or rush squads or schools or anything like that? You know, when you come in and build a big solar farm like that, is there any way of end that, to gain something like that profit?
Certainly. Yeah, I believe, you know, we haven't developed any. Yeah, I believe, you know, we haven't developed any large scale on that kind of scale type of projects, but I know of projects that have, have had those type of profers involved.
They wanted to. I think it would probably, would be a good idea when you come into someone's community and on large scales like that, because you know, things will happen from time to time, but you should be able to profit something out of the deal when you have it. I was just curious on that.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any other comments from the public? State your name and address, please, sir.
John Fleet from Hartfield.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and staff. My concern is not whether solar power is good or bad. I'm all about energy that's, as they say, green produced. My concern is where and how. Where and how. We have two large projects already approved in the county. I'm dear friends with both of those folks involved in those projects, as close to me as you can get. It's not about what's gone on in the past, it's where are we going from here? My question is, what's the rush? What's the rush? I'm told there are county parcels that the county, I guess it's maybe the J.O. or some other entity in the county that needs approval of this ordinance in order to get some changes made, get some installations allowed. If that's the case, why not deal with those individually? Why do we have to have this ordinance change? Why not deal with those individually? Take some more time and study what's going on. That's the first question I would ask. Permitting and allowing solar installations in general business districts, village community, basically any and everywhere, is very concerning, not just to me, to people I talk to in the community. I am a bit surprised at the apathy that there's not more people here looking at this. It went through as a standard zone change and sort of blah, blah, blah. But the end result can be devastating. Already heard the chairman speak about what happens with the residue. All these solar commons, in deference to the gentlemen here tonight, this is new, this is new stuff. This is new. We don't know where they're going. We don't know whether they're economically viable. We don't know whether, we know the economic model, if it's not subsidized, as it stands, it's not an economically viable product. We did some figures on a couple of them and I looked at it for my family and we're looking at a small project. But no way in the world that whoever's building that can get their money back if it's not subsidized. I can promise you. Not in my lifetime and I'm getting too old, but not in my children's and probably not my grandchildren's. So when we look at that, the subject fail. I'm not talking against solar power and solar farms, but there's no history to determine whether the economic model will stand the test of time. Surely the cost of the major installs, as I just said, and the lease cost caused one to wonder. Not to mention the impact on wildlife, the loss of productive timber and farmland, and the blight of what they look like. I looked at Grafton Church as an example today. I ride by it every day and I looked at it today. It could be surrounded by a solar panel. Y'all know where I'm talking about, at the corner of Grafton Church Road and Stormont Road. Just use that in your mind's eye, if you will, and think about that. There's nothing to stop that under this ordinance. Surely some areas need to be off limits. Absolutely need to be off limits. When we first started looking at the larger facilities that are going in.
May I interrupt just a second? We're going a little over the three minutes and I just wanna make sure that the board is okay with that. If y'all good, continue on, but we do need.
I won't be much longer.
No, you're good. Just wanted to make sure you were good.
At least we said early on in some discussions that we should consider something similar to the trailer park ordinance that we have on the books that unfortunately is not so well enforced. And that means they should be so far from routes 3, 33, 17, and I believe it's 227. I may be not exactly right on the road numbers, but I think it's close. That is to keep them that far off. I hear about the grid coming down and you can't be so far off to be economically viable to put it in. But gee whiz, if they can spend what they're spending on leases, they can run a line a mile, I promise you. I promise you. So that's, that doesn't sell where we sit. That doesn't sell with the people I'm talking to. We can't go far off the road. No, I guess you can if you want to do it the cheapest way, but it can be done. So the visibility is a, is a big impact. You only see that when you're the neighbor. When you're the neighbor. You know, the old adage of night in my backyard, well, it sounds great, it's green power, it's gonna do this, gonna do that. But to restate, it's not yet an economically proven viable product. Certainly where we put them and how we put them there needs more attention than just a blanket, carte blanche, here you go. We'll let you do it where you want to. And I'm really concerned when I saw it in village community and general business. Really concerned. Think about that, the investment. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I made copies of what I just said and I'll give them to.
Give them to Neil, that is our.
You can pass it to you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from the public? If not, we will close the public comment period and see if the supervisors have any further questions of Mr. Kreis, given the two public comments that we've had.
I will, I will just say that personally, I think solar panels are absolutely beautiful. I'm saving $70 a month with them on top of my photos. So I'm a little bit prejudiced, but I, I think that we could do a better job screening it with, I wanna say trees, but not high trees, because it wouldn't, we wouldn't want to block the sun. But I think we could put in better screening than we've been doing. I don't know whether you can write that into the ordinance or not, but that would be my only suggestion.
Would you like to comment, Mr. Vincent?
Sure. Well, the special exception criteria that's been adopted calls for tighter screening, more evergreen type trees that'll have more infill than, than the deciduous type of trees that were planted up in Hartfield. Hartfield fell underneath the landscape, all we had was the landscape ordinance to, which if you take our landscape ordinance, it's, you know, take Dollar General, for example. I mean, that would be the, the minimum that they had to plant. They could have gotten away with that, because that's all we had that we could hold them to, is our landscape ordinance. To try to be good neighbors, Dominion Power came back and increased that intensity along with, you know, River Birch working with Dominion to try to plant more that would have more infill. Of course, that, that type of vegetation's gonna take longer to, to establish itself than pine trees or cedars or cypress, that type of thing that would be planted or it's required now. So the, the screening is a little bit more intense for the projects coming forward than it was for that particular project. I just wanted to make that clarification. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Dave, just to clarify, the need for this ordinance came up particularly because of the, the small solar project designed for the high school. Isn't that correct? That's when the need was recognized that we had a gap.
There was a deficiency in the ordinance to allow that.
So that's what this initiated this and this particular definitions and clarification.
Right. And there's also a facility that Sun Tribe is looking at up in the Hartfield area too, I believe. So that's.
Yeah, it will apply to other.
That was for the bigger scale, so there is something.
The larger scale.
Right. But that, if you, if you notice, the two, the two more, the general business and the village community districts have that setback requirement for those type of facilities to, you know, that we have to adhere to. So you shouldn't be able to see those type of facilities. They should be far enough back. They'll be screened as well, you know, in addition to the, to the setback for those type of facilities.
David, given our existing ordinances and assuming we approve this change, ordinance amendment tonight, what do you envision that can be done to address Mr. Fleet's concerns? And that is, some of it has to do with speed and others of it has to do with, yeah, well, if it costs a little bit of money to run that line down the side road so that we get it farther off the main road, that could be a good thing, because, you know, anyway, I just, I share a lot of those, of those sentiments and I would love to be able to address them in a simple fashion.
I, I don't disagree with a lot of what he said either. It's, it's been a collaboration of a lot of different thought, you know, to bring this together. It's not just one person putting this together. My, you know, I've tried to assemble what everybody's thoughts are, you know, so you have different varying opinions as to where, you know, what should be done with this. So, I mean, that's something that we can, I was telling Ms. Wolfart before the meeting, that's something, we may look at a couple of these and go back and see what, what we don't like about them and go back and fix some of them. Say, we don't like them this close, let's require more set, let's increase this setback or let's increase that setback or let's keep them off, you know, increase it off primary highways for any district. We can look at all that and the board has the ability to, and the planning commission too, has the ability to make those ordinance amendments as we see fit going forward. You know, once we have a couple of them built, we'll get a better feel for what we, what we have. And then we go back and, and look at some of the things that were brought up tonight in the public hearing. And I think those are valid, very valid concerns and that's one person's opinion and this is a, trying to blend together a lot of thought into one ordinance as to the different, different thoughts on where it should be. Some feel it should be just do it and some want it with a lot of restrictions. So you, you try to seek a balance in any ordinance that you draft. You can see there's a lot, there's a lot in that language in that ordinance that, for conditions, even on the by right type facilities, so. But certainly we can go back at any point and look at this again. We have the ability, the board and the planning commission has that ability.
Any further questions?
I think we need, you know, from time to time, look like that.
I do too.
And adjust it.
And we put another one up and we've got a, got a platform of knowledge and move forward with that one.
Right.
Can't do it, very few things I did right the first time.
Right. We're, we're learning. We're all learning. That's, that's true.
Well, at this point, I suppose the board would entertain a motion on ordinance amendment 2018-05. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay. I'll move that we adopt ordinance amendment 2018-05.
You have a motion? It's our second.
I'm the second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. And at this point, we will open the floor to public comments. Anybody from the public would like to have anything else to say to the board, they're welcome to come up at this time. And if they don't stand up within the next five seconds, we'll probably declare the public comment period closed.
Is it a little bit late to be called for public comment?
Well, I'm just going by the agenda. This is, this is what the agenda is when we have night sessions, so.
You have the vote and decide yes or no and then you ask.
No, no, this is the regular public comment. This isn't the public comment on the public unit.
Okay.
We've already acted on that.
All right. And at this point, I'm to make an announcement that item C in the regular agenda item, Cook's Corner and School Renovation Project Authorization to Execute Contract is going to be deferred to our joint meeting with the school board on the 12th of this morning.
Yep.
And if there be no further business to come before this meeting, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor can just get up and go. I didn't suspect since we've been here since 9:30, there'd be any opposition.
So you'll need.
Some of us, not everybody.